My name is Kevin Gentry and, you know, on behalf of the board, first of all, I want to say thank you so much for joining us this afternoon. We've all been anticipating this meeting and we're looking forward to getting to know a little bit more about you, the services you offer and, and all the above. So I figure we can start off by briefly introducing ourselves, if that's okay with you. And my name is, like I said, my name is Kevin Gentry. And just a little bit about my background, I work for the State of Tennessee Director of Investment Operations, and I work with a variety of consultants in a variety of different capacities. So, looking through your packet and everything, I really appreciate all the comprehensive information that you've provided. Perhaps we can start from right to left. Mr. Tindall?
You want me to go? I'm off camera, but Craig Tindall, I'm the City Manager for the City of Murfreesboro.
Go ahead, Richard.
I think they intentionally put us off camera. Richard Stone, good to see you. I'm Market President for CapStar Bank for the South Nashville Region here in middle Tennessee.
I'm Ann, and we already know each other.
I'm Rick LaLance, former Council Member and Raymond James Wealth Manager here in Murfreesboro.
Hi, I'm Sean Applegate, Chief Legal Officer at Venture Express, which is a transportation logistics company here in Murfreesboro.
And I'm Steve Flat, I'm the CEO of National Healthcare Corporation. It's a publicly traded senior care company located here, headquartered here in Murfreesboro.
Thank you, Board Members. Ann and Brad, can you tell us a little bit about yourselves?
Yeah, absolutely. I know you have a presentation book on us, and we won't go through every slide, but let us introduce ourselves. I'm Brad Alford, I'm the founder of Alpha Capital. I founded it sixteen years ago. I've got more investment experience, I own it, playing now, I guess thirty-three, thirty-four years. I started here in Atlanta, we're located here in Atlanta, in our offices here in Atlanta, in the late eighties at Emory University's endowment, and then went to the Duke Endowment in North Carolina in the nineties, and helped manage two large pools of money, and then moved back to Atlanta and worked for Invesco, which is a large money management firm here, and then started Alpha in 2006. Anna joined me a little over a decade ago, I'll have to go through her background.
Absolutely. Hi, everyone, I'm Anna Tabke, I'm a principal and owner at Alpha Capital, along with Brad. I started my career in the institutional investment consulting community, working for a mid-sized firm and then a very large firm called Mercer, and as Brad mentioned, I joined him over ten years ago.
Excellent, sounds good. Well, I suppose what we can do is, you can kind of let you all talk us through your packet of documents here, but before we do that, I want to ask any of the Board Members if they had any specific questions before. Okay, well, we'll turn it over to you two.
Thank you.
Well, I'll throw, I'll just add a few slides up on the screen, just to give you some visual information. And so, you know, here's Anna, myself, we're the owners of the firm, we work with every client. You send to a client list, we've worked with about, you know, eighty firms there in Tennessee, we worked with the University of Tennessee, Weston Homes, and we originally were blessed to meet Ann, I was about five years ago, with Chris Houston, and so, you know, we've got clients all over the place, whether it's been in Hawaii to Alaska, to kind of everywhere, you can see a lot of the names. We love working with, you know, mission-driven organizations. Anna has told herself a wonderful story, and what you're going to be doing for the next decade-plus, so it's very exciting what you're doing. We had an interesting situation in San Diego, where a gentleman who had passed away three or four years previous to selling his company, sold it and set up a foundation, so they started with fresh cash, it was a bigger number, it was over a billion dollars, but, you know, we got, it's really interesting to start with cash, you very rarely see that happen. You know, most people have done with an advisor, or making changes, and weren't brought in, but you guys are in a really enviable position. So, you know, what's unique about Alpha and, and, you know, using a search firm, it's a very niche-y mom-and-pop business, where small firms, you see our client list, we've helped some really big companies, like, you know, Kroger, or Marriott, or Truist, or University of Tennessee, or firms like that, but it's, it's something, you know, it's a very complex industry, whether it's a non-discretionary consultant, or an OCO. An OCO stands for Outsourced Chief Investment Officer, and, you know, we're here to kind of educate you on the different types of models out there. So, you know, one thing about Alpha that makes us unique is that we're completely independent. We charge a flat fee, and it's, we've had to take over a year to do, you know, one of these searches to help clients. And so, we don't have, we're not a consultant, we're not going to try to be your advisor, we come in completely independent, and sit on your side of the table, and I know Ann can attest to that, that we're not here, it's a terrible business model, and that it's a three or four-month project, and then, you know, our job is not having big clients, at least for every six to eight years, you, you know, probably go through this process, just to be a good fiduciary. But, you know, we were talking to Ann, and of the eighty clients, you have that list, we haven't had, you know, a repeat search, so, you know, we've been fortunate to find a lot of success with the clients that we've had, and the firms that they've ended up using. You know, we're both CFAs, that's a very, you know, high-level exam over three years, where both, you know, both Anna and I are kind of nerds, and we understand the investment world, and, you know, as we're looking at advisors, we want to be able to talk their talk, and so, that's very helpful. And we're committed, you know, we do searches for a living, we're very fortunate to have the clients that we've had, we don't market, we have folks like Ann, who've said, hey, I've used them in the past, I know them, I've heard of them, and, and so, we've been, you know, fortunate to have some really good clients over the last, you know, decade-plus. We're a small firm, but we punch upon our weight, you see the clients, it's almost a hundred billion in assets, so, you know, one of the great things about hiring a search firm like us is we carry a pretty big stick. There's about a hundred firms out there that we consider kind of institutional quality, and we're able to negotiate fees. I think we hopefully pay for ourselves in many circumstances over multiples, just by negotiating the fee part, and knowing what's market, what's out there, and things like that. So, you know, we're not afraid to play bad cop. I know everyone knows about y'all's, you know, inflow of cash, and I'm sure every advisor in, you know, Tennessee wants to help you manage it, and so, we play bad cop a lot, and we don't have a problem with that. Any question? I don't want this to just sit here and talk to you guys, please, ask questions as we go along. Any questions about kind of the clients that we serve?
I guess my question I do have, Brad, is, do you serve, well, I'm certainly serve a variety of clients. I didn't really get to digest the entire list, but for any clients more in the public-facing area, I'm certain you serve some of, some folks like that, and do you find any?
Yeah. We did the City of Charlottesville, we did their pool of money, you know, public universities like Virginia Tech, University of Tennessee, so we work with public institutions like that, public, you know, foundations, like Community Foundation of Atlanta, you know, things like the Richmond Community Foundation. So, we have across a variety of our different types of client types.
Okay, and it doesn't cause any difficulty, from what you've seen historically, obtaining somebody to provide the services, the type of services that we're looking for?
No, I mean, you know, this, you guys have more hurdles, and since they're your neighbors, University of Tennessee, and I'm sure you guys have smiles and frowns, and I'm sure some other non-Tennessee fans in the group, you know, they, they had a procurement office, and, and we went through those steps, and it is a little more formal, but even dealing with a, a big corporation like a Kroger, which is the second largest employer behind Walmart in the U.S., they, you know, we deal with those steps and processes as being a very large public company, so we're very used to that.
Yeah, absolutely, and Kevin, to just expand on that a little bit, there is the procurement aspect, right, so one question would be whether or not it's a public process. So, for University of Tennessee, the RFP is a public process, anybody who wanted to was able to submit a bid. For City of Charlottesville, theirs was actually a little bit different, where they were able to kind of keep this separate, and so, it was done through an invitation-only process. So, we can accommodate it either way, it's not, you know, it's not anything we haven't faced before, it would just depend on the circumstances for your community investment trust, and we can help you work through that either way. The other part of your question, I think you asked is, you know, does it affect who might bid, right, are there groups that might not want to work with entities? We don't see it a lot, we do see sensitivity to providing some of the requested information, if it potentially isn't for a request or things like that, you know, they might seek to, for example, not include certain investment manager names, so one level down. That tends to be a little bit, a little bit easier to work around, because, you know, they just simply say, you know, we can't provide this information as part of the public process. I think it's much more likely to come up if you guys start doing things like private equity investments, there'll be certain underlying managers, but that's something that the group that we help you hire would be able to work through with you guys on a case-by-case basis. So, I don't think you'll, and I don't anticipate running into very many, if, if any at all, issues hiring this advisor.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, all of our clients are so different, and it really hits a couple points here, is, and there, I was thinking, there's another hospital, it was a, you know, a private hospital bought a public hospital, and it was in Wyoming on Matrona, and they were on, you know, they had about $200 million plus from their liquidity event, and we had to do tremendous amount of education on what was out there, and that's, to this point on the left, is, and I'm not going to take any credit for this, Anna writes wonderful research reports, I'll have to talk about, you know, that capability.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, one of the things we see with, with new investment pools, right, you don't have an established governance process or way of doing things, there's a lot of, kind of, a lot of things that you're going to try and accomplish through this process, and one of them is learning more about your fiduciary responsibilities, ask trustees for the trust, and how the group that we help you hire, you know, if we're so lucky to work with you, or there, you know, some sort of outside investment firm, how they're going to help you discharge those fiduciary duties. So, education is a really big part of what we do, because we think that better educated fiduciaries make better decisions, and it really sets you up for success through this process. And as Brad mentioned, one of the ways we like to do that, I write white papers, I enjoy writing, and I think it can be very helpful for investment committee members and trustees to have something to, you know, chew over before our first meeting, right? Brad mentioned OCIO, what is that? I mean, we have a white paper on OCIO 101, and then we have OCIO 102. So, when you come to the meeting, you can have a little bit of context in the background, and we think it's been a very helpful way, not only to help our clients get up to speed more quickly, and give them some things to reference, but also a good dialogue with the industry, because we'll write about things that we see that are, you know, there are standards that we think should be in place, and, you know, the industry hasn't really adopted them yet, and so, our research serves a couple different purposes, but I think it could potentially be very helpful for you all specifically.
Yeah, these all live, if you want to, I call them bedtime reading, if you want to do something, even tonight, they live on our website, alphacapitalngmt.com, you'll see those up on there, you can pull them down and read on those, yeah, 101 and 102 are really, really well-done. On the right side of this page is, we've also done some things to help kind of move the industry along, just looking at OCO, Outsourced Chief Investment Officer, that industry is now almost $3 trillion in size, and we started doing, you know, it became in, pretty prevalent in six or seven years ago, that it used to just be non-discretionary consulting versus discretionary consulting, you know, I'll show you some slides on that, but non-discretionary is the way we were at Emory and Duke, where we used a consulting firm like Cambridge, and they gave us manager ideas, and then the committee would decide, hey, should we, we invest in that large-cap manager, this other large-cap manager, and there used to be discretionary consulting, where the manager would, you know, hire and fire managers, and work within your investment policy statement. They put a better name on it, called OCIO, Outsourced Chief Investment Officer, and, you know, it's really grown to a $3 trillion industry, and it's, it's quite complex, there's over, as I said, about eighty to a hundred firms out there that we work with, and they're all, you know, very different, and so, we, you know, our clients, when we do a search, they want, they're hiring an Outsourced Chief Investment Officer, it's like hiring a coach, you want to see if they're, you know, their win-loss record, they could manage you money, and so, we ask for lots of track records and things like that, a lot are audited, which is this kind of GIP standard, without getting too far down the rabbit hole, it's, it's an audited track record, and we thought there should be some type of an index out there, so clients can see how OCOs stacked up, and so, five years ago, we worked with the OCO community, and said, would you submit anonymous client performance, and as well as asset allocation, we'll create some indices, and they agreed to it, they said, you should partner some, you know, we're a small firm, partner with somebody, they can handle this data, especially the data security side of it, and we approached NASDAQ, and the Alpha NASDAQ indices were launched, right, four years ago. We now have fifty OCOs submitting about twelve-hundred of their institutional clients, and we have a whole series of indices, where you can look at your performance, as well as your asset allocation. There's a, a public website that, that NASDAQ built, which is alphanasdoco.com, and you can see, you know, pull down the most recent quarterly snapshot of performance, as well as who the fifty firms are that participate in this, we have most of the industry, it's kind of a who's-who of names, and, you know, it's really helped give clients the ability to see how they're doing versus, you know, other industry players.
Interesting.
We, then took all this data, we, we have this Alpha Capital, it's a data in NASDAQ, and we hired a technology firm to build an online tool, where you can drop in your performance and, and do all the slicing and dicing, and so, here's just kind of a one-pager, you can see how you stack up versus over twelve-hundred different other institutions in terms of performance and asset allocation, and our clients love to use that. I mean, you guys don't have a historical performance track record to look at, but, you know, clients that do have that like to see how they're doing versus the industry. I think the most important thing to do is, is, I'll let Anna talk some here, and she's so good at this, is, go through what a search looks like. You know, we have done this quite a bit, and we've got it almost, it's very topical, and so, I'll let Anna talk to the four phases of search.
Absolutely, thanks, Brad. So, you can see her on the overview of the Alpha Search timeline, it takes approximately four months. I will say summers are a little bit tricky, because there's so many usually pre-existing vacation schedules, so you might want to add a couple weeks on for things like Fourth of July, and we think about it in four phases, and a lot of what we've already talked about in terms of our research, and the peer universes and the indices tools, really tied very closely into our search process. So, the first phase we have here, Explore, we have kind of two weeks earmarked for that, although it varies, depending on, you know, what the clients, how complex they are, how much we need to get up to speed, is really several-fold, kind of does double duty in terms of the process. So, one of the most important things we do in Explore is get up to speed on, you know, what are you guys looking to accomplish, right? So, understanding your trustee structure, your governance structure that you've put in place already, what still needs to be done in order to kind of bring this to be ready to hire an outside firm, and start thinking about what firms might be good fits for you all, as you're looking to hire an advisor. It's also an opportunity to do that education that we talked about, right? So, so getting you guys up to speed on what types of firms are out there, what types of services do they provide for, for groups like your Community Investment Trust, what is that, what's that relationship likely to look like? You're going to start out, I think, about forty million, you're going to have continual inflows, you're going to go from, you know, a nice size to very large, I think there's going to be a lot of groups that want to work with you guys, you're going to have a very wide choice, so we want to get you up to speed to, to understand what the industry looks like, and what those service providers look like. So, that's all kind of jumbled into the Explore phase, but it's been a very helpful way for us to make sure that everybody's on the same page, we're all starting from, you know, the same knowledge base, when we use terms, we all know what they mean, and we mean the same thing. And it's also a great opportunity to start building alignment with you as the trustees, on how you're going to be making the decision. So, you're going to get a lot of data on these, on these providers and the RFP process, right? It's almost a superfluous amount of data, so when you start getting these RFPs back, and there are hundreds of pages, how do you know what's going to be important? That's one of the things we also do in the Explore phase. So, we start with a very simple committee assessment, it shouldn't take you very long, you know, it's eight criteria, we ask you to think about what's most important to you, is it fees, is it the track record of, of the firm that you're hiring, is it the investment philosophy and process, is it conflicts of interest, right, do they have proprietary products, like how many ways are they making money off of the same dollar? And we ask you guys to anonymously write that and send it back to us, and then we'll show you, you know, where you guys stack up individually, and then as a group, of what's most important to you all. So, we use this a lot through the search process, but again, it's getting a bunch of trustees with very different backgrounds, and very different opinions, all on the same page, of how we're going to move efficiently through, you know, analyze this data, and figure out if it's going to be the best firm for you all. So, it's been a very important part of our process. When we set, when we finish the Explore phase, we're really off, we have a great foundation for how we're going to work together, what types of firms we're going to go out and find. If you guys have, you know, as Brad mentioned, I'm sure everybody in Tennessee wants to, to help the Community Investment Trust with these assets, it's a really exciting opportunity. You know, if there are groups that we should be considering, that should be on our radar, let us know. And then, as, as we talked about, you know, the design and the deliver can be a little bit tweaked based on your specific procurement processes. If, you know, if you guys are able to do it, kind of through an invitation-only RFP process, then the way that typically works is Brad and I will be out vetting and pre-qualifying candidates, and then we will send out the RFP to a list of candidates, typically about six to seven. If we want to cast a wider net, which a lot of our more public institutions do, we do a couple-phase process, the first is a request for information, so gathering basic qualitative information, quantitative, sorry, quantitative information on a range of candidates. How many assets do you have, how many, you know, how many groups do you work with that look like us? Clients, employees, you know, what kind of resources do you have, what kind of bench do you have? Asking some basic questions, so that we can say, hey, you know, in order to be successful in working with the Murfreesboro Trust, you really need to have, call it ten billion in assets, and, you know, at least three other representative clients that look like us, and that's one of the ways in which you can start narrowing the universe down, to find those that are most appropriate to you. If we, again, if we need to do a public process, we would suggest some sort of way that you can screen those, and put in some basically hurdles that firms need to meet, so that you don't have a bunch of people who are filling out this RFP, and, and really not likely to ultimately be successful. So, we can work with you guys in the design and the deliver. Brad and I have a very comprehensive RFP template that we use, so all the, you know, standard legal questions and things like that. But we also, yeah.
Oh, just, want to just add one more thing on the Explore phase, we do a fiduciary review, which Anna does, which is amazing, she goes through all the your fiduciary responsibilities, loyalty and care, and the different parts of checking those off, so it's really a refresher on, you know, as a fiduciary, what's, what are you responsible for, so that's really helpful. And another thing we also do in the Explore phase is, is educational parts about, you know, the different models out there, and here we've simplified it quite a bit, but if you look on the far left, this is non-discretionary consulting, is when I talked about, you know, you hire consulting, they give you manager ideas, say, okay, here are three large-cap growth managers, you pick, so the committee really makes all the decisions, where that, and then there's implemented consulting, that is kind of just souped-up non-discretionary, where they will do all the paperwork for you, but you jump that gap right there, it's going to OCO, or, as I said, it was called discretionary consulting, and then there's this one fund, OCO, where you can just buy one vehicle that, that looks more like an endowment, it's probably a little too, too early for you guys to do something like that, but, you know, certainly something we want to explore with you. But, you know, as committees look at this, and we have a committee responsibility, the investment committee responsibility, and as people have gone from non-discretionary to OCO, they, the committee's like, what are we going to do now? They're, the managers are hiring, I mean, so the OCIO is hiring and firing managers, what's our job going to be? And your job, still the most important, is to build the investment policy in concert with your OCO or consultant, and to, you know, monitor either the OCO or the consultant, but the investment policy statement has the asset allocation with the upper, lower bands, which, as we all know, that's over eighty percent of the return, is, you know, are you investing stocks, equities, you know, private equity, different asset classes. So, you saw the most responsible and important job, you've just given up that hiring and firing of managers every day, and so, it's not a huge change, if you do decide to go OCO, we're indifferent, as, as I said, we didn't pay a flat fee, so we just want you guys to pick the model that's the best fit for you all.
So, Brad, if I understood you correctly, I think we're going from, from left to right here, in terms of the services offered, and I think what we're talking to you about is the OCIO, so that would, that would be the piece that we would have to shoot for, to obtain somebody who would actually manage the investments for us, right?
Yeah, I think that's the, the right fit for you all, just given, I started a couple nonprofit boards, and, you know, we're, everyone's a volunteer, very busy, and the markets are very dynamic, especially we learned last year, they can be super dynamic, and, you know, that's one reason OCO has just accelerated its growth. Many people have said, hey, meeting quarterly is just not enough for, for especially a new portfolio like you guys, you'll be building a portfolio, you really need somebody looking at it every day.
And would they also provide, well, you, you have it built in here, and says consulting, so, you know, I guess in my mind, I'm just kind of thinking about all the above more so. It looks like that would be the column, that would be all, well, all-inclusive.
Can I ask, let me, now, we'll piggyback on that a little bit, but, so are you saying that, I heard you say something about it's probably too early for us to do something, was that the one fund?
It is, we explain what a one fund is, because it's fairly complex, there's four of them out there, they're all four groups that left endowments, the folks at the Duke Endowment I used to work with left, and they all formed between ten and fifteen years ago, formed Global Endowment Management in Charlotte, the folks at Stanford University formed McKenna, which is in California, the University of Richmond folks formed Spider, and then the Wake Forest Endowment team formed Verger. And so, what you do is you buy one partnership, and it has a complete portfolio, you don't control asset allocation, how much of stocks and bonds, everybody's invested the same way, you're all in the same managers, and some people just don't like giving up that much control, you may have a different, you know, risk tolerance, liquidity preference, and some things, you might, you are just on a one-line entry, say you own, you know, forty million dollars in a global endowment fund, and that's all you would own. It's fairly hard to get out, we're fine to show you those, they're the most expensive and the toughest to get out of, but it gives you, for Global Endowment Management, it's an eleven-billion-dollar pool of money, it's got private equity, real estate, hedge funds, so, you know, a ton of asset classes, and immediately, rather than building the portfolio, you buy, it's open on a monthly basis, it's like buying a mutual fund, the day you buy it, you have the same exact exposure that someone that's been in there for fourteen years, so you own a full portfolio, you get the exact same return from day one, so you don't have to build all these positions out over, you know, especially for illiquids, over multiple years.
Interesting, okay, so, so just the idea that, I mean, I guess the reason I was asking is kind of this, the comment is made too early for that, is if that would be something that, that we might do five years from now, but not right now, but that, that's just something, were you just saying too early, just in terms of, that's just something else we probably ought to talk about one other, another day?
Orbus size.
Yeah, a size thing?
Yeah, and it's like, most of them are forty to fifty percent illiquids and alternatives, so it's very aggressive, very hard, years to get out of, it's people that are very comfortable, you know, going into highly liquid vehicles, they take years to get out of, so if you leave one, it usually takes six to eight years to get out of them, and so, it just, it's, you know, with a sitting on cash, and to go into something that's half-liquid and half-inalternatives, I'm, I'm not sure what the feedback you would get from, you know, other people that weren't comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, got it, okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. We'd be glad to show you, show you that, no, I mean, you know, Ann does one very well, and has had great experience with it.
Will we still be able to have access to some, you know, private equity-type stuff in the discretionary consulting OCO?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Your size, you own individual manager names, you would be in some type of a pool vehicle, like the common fund is a great, I mean, you'd be in the common fund's private equity vehicle, so it's a way to aggregate clients, to have more buying power. To say you were to put twenty percent in private equity, that'd be only eight million dollars, some funds have a five-million-dollar minimum, so you wouldn't own just one manager, and so, you would have the immediate ability to own, they call, a lot of them call building blocks, have multiple managers immediately. But, say you were to put two million dollars, you may have fifteen different private equity managers.
Yep.
It'd be diversified.
Do you actually own the private equity in those, like the, the funds are, are, the equity firms, or is that like an index of private equity?
No, you would own the fund. No, you would own the fund, so you would be in a variety, you know, maybe a Carlisle, you know, or not necessarily Carlisle or Blackstone or something like that, but, you know, mid-sized. But yeah, you would own private, illiquid private equity funds. You know, the thing about private equity, it takes, you know, you get in, but it takes five to 10 years to get out. I mean, Kevin knows this, this type of asset class, very illiquid, but typically 4% to 5% better than S and P. But you've got to have a, you know, you want to step in over multiple years, vintage your exposure. And so it's a, it's a process.
Okay, good, thanks.
Absolutely. So, so we, we get excited about this stuff. Here, here's the homework, so it's not scary. It's, we give you, give you eight different criteria and you pick them, it takes 10 minutes. They're all super important, whether it's track record or, or fees. And then we've, you know, groups are so different of what people think are important. And it gets the group, your board of trustees thinking on the same page. But you're going to, we're going to show you some incredible OCIOs and you're going to be like, and say, well, I like that one. And you get to go back and say, well, what's important to us as a group? And so we found this to be, you know, really important as we do searches with committees. And we always do it with committees. So back to the timeline, I jumped in and Anna was on our second phase, design and deliver, and I'll let her take it from here.
Thanks Brad. So, you know, one of the things I wanted to mention about the RFP itself. So, you know, a lot of groups are going to be able to just copy and paste answers to, you know, tell us about your firm and your history and how much insurance do you have and things like that. And so one of the, I think the most important and most valuable parts of our RFP is the case studies. So what do I mean by that? When we spend time together and explore, getting a better understanding of, you know, what, what is really of interest to you? What, what type of direction do you want to take this portfolio? We're going to take some of that, we're basically going to put together case study questions where the investment teams have to already start engaging with you as a potential client. You can't just have the marketing team copy and paste. One of those is the investment policy statement. So we wouldn't recommend that you put together an investment policy statement before you go through this process because one of the first things your OCIO is going to do is help you put together an investment policy statement, right? So if you do it at the beginning, you're just going to have to redo it. But what we can do in the RFP is ask them, you know, what are the best practices in terms of building an investment policy statement? How do you help clients go through that? And you're going to get your free advice from all of these different firms on best thinking, best practices today in building an investment policy statement. And just like how we're, you know, we're trying to help you guys get up to speed on the market in terms of the explore, they're going to help you get up to speed on and really hit the ground running when you hire this firm and start building the investment portfolio. So we think that's a really valuable part of this process. And the other case studies that we're going to do are really more questions that you have, that you really want to dig into. You know, so for example, private equity, what kind of private equity could we possibly do? And what would that look like? What are your recommendations in that asset class? You know, what would the interpretation be like? We can ask all sorts of those questions as well. So really digging into kind of some of these key topics in the case studies could really help it be a little bit more of a valuable living document than simply, you know, kind of copy and pasted questions and answers that you see 100 times. So when we do the RFP, you know, typically we give them about a month to fill it out. And so that's one of the reasons why our timeline takes four plus months. So they would get about four weeks to complete the RFP process. And when it comes back, I'll tell you, Brad and I really get to work on the analyze and evaluate phase. So trying to line everybody up, apples to apples, giving you guys some really good comparative data, really based on that criteria that we all built together at the beginning, right? What did you tell us was the most important to you all? We're going to make sure that we give you really good differentiators on each of the firms in those areas of most importance to you. This is also where our quantitative tools really come into play, right? Brad always likes to use the football analogy, if you're hiring a coach, you want to see his win-loss record for her. And it's the same thing with investment firms, right? Take a look at the track record they've been able, the value they've been able to drive for their clients. And we'll help you show those relative to, you know, the industry and, you know, thousands of OCIO clients. So it can be really helpful to put it into context to see who, you know, who's been really able to deliver value to clients. So we will go through this process of analyze and evaluate. And when we come out of that, our goal is to have the RFP candidates narrowed down to usually about three finalists. You know, you can do four, you can do two, but three tends to be the Goldilocks number, it works really well. And we give them time to put together really good finals presentations before coming together as a group. So probably be there at the airport with you guys for the finals presentation. And so we get to hear from them on topics that are, again, of most importance to you. We don't think it's very helpful if they come in at the end of this process and just give you a standard new business presentation, right? At this point, you already know a lot about these firms, you've gone through their RFP responses, we've analyzed them and really compared them to each other. So we want to know, what do you still need to know about them in order to feel comfortable hiring them for the trust? Let's have them come and be prepared to talk about that. So whether it's, you know, how they're going to help you guys, you know, put together a portfolio essentially from scratch or maybe it's about, you know, how they're going to help you guys kind of get up to speed on governance. Whatever that is, that's why we give them three weeks to put together these presentations. You know, they're all regulated entities, they got to get everything through compliance, so we give them some time for that. And really want to have them, you know, come ready to make the most of this together. So following those presentations, you know, we go through a final decision process, help you guys document it in whatever way that's appropriate. Again, going back to that criteria that we had built together, the explore. And then as Brad mentioned, you know, we negotiate the fees and services. I'm going to let Brad talk about that, because it's kind of his favorite part of the process.
Yeah, I mean, we've been doing it a while and it's, it's kind of fun. We know where they are, where they can be flexible and we can, you know, we carry a pretty big stick. We do a lot of searches for, obviously, you know, a lot of money. And, and so I enjoy it and we will certainly go to bat for you guys and not, you know, hurt the relationship, which I think people do when they try to do it themselves. And so they know that we, they play pretty rough and so it's not a problem for us to do it. But I actually enjoy it. And then, you know, after that, we're here, we're, and we've been friends for four or five years now. We're not going away forever, but we're not going to build you anymore. And so we're not here to be your consultant or sit around and armchair quarterback what they're doing. And I think people like that. I mean, the finality of it all is, is nice, as people know, the project is done. And but we're always here to help if there's any other issue. And we were telling Anne that the only repeat client we've had was a pool of money up in New York and they were unhappy with their lead relationship manager. Didn't feel like he was assertive enough for their committee. So we had to come in and they just swapped out who the relationship manager was. But of those 80 searches, we haven't had to do another search. You know, you're supposed to do them every seven or eight years. So, and people will start coming back just for good governance, but so far, so good, you know, so good. To talk about our universe, you know, we work with about 100 firms. I don't think there's a firm out there that doesn't know who we are. You know, as we said, we like, we've been handed lists of over 20 firms to look at. You know, it's a foundation in New Orleans. We like to send the RFP out to five to seven firms. The Goldilocks number is kind of six, maybe. You know, there's no courtesy RFP. Our RFP is almost 100 questions with case studies, with asking for a ton of different exhibits, whether it's ADVs, the capital markets assumptions, the manager research. And so people say, well, I would have sent it to my friend down the street because, you know, he's my neighbor or whatever. And there's no courtesy RFP. Our RFP takes hundreds of hours to complete. And so it's a very intensive process. But, you know, a lot of the firms have seen, seen our RFPs, here's kind of the measurement stick here. We've sent out 80 to 88 different firms. 61 different firms have presented at our finals and 31 firms have won our searches. So there's a lot of variety. We don't have a buy list, every client is so different. So people ask us, hey, what are your top 10 firms? Or I think the most, any searches any firm has won is maybe four. So we aren't really loyal to anybody but our clients.
Brad, with that, should we open it up to questions?
You want to have any questions? I think, you know, the one question, this is a very good presentation. The one question I had is, you know, a lot of times when you, when you deal with consultants, and I used to be one, is they make a lot of promises and they say that they can do a lot of things. And sometimes that turns out not to be the case. In your experience, have you found that when a specific, well, rather not consultant, but OCIO, when you've placed an OCIO with a particular group, do they tend to stay? Do they tend to be issues and things like that? And if they, if there are issues, where do you guys come in?
Yeah, good question. You know, and you're, a lot of the bigger firms and their wonderful firms, the big three, Mercer, Aon, Willis Towers Watson, consultants jump around, so we're sometimes, and those are typically, they wouldn't be a fit for you guys at your side. They do a lot of the fancy funds, the big speed funds, the big corporate funds. Yeah, and so those people will bounce around and we hate it when people leave. You know, we, the OCIOs and the boutique OCIOs, most of them are owners in the firm and so they're not leaving. And so we do like that part of dealing with more boutique firms. You know, some of the big, the wonderful firms, you know, JP Morgan has won, won one of our searches, Goldman Sachs has won one of our searches, but you will see some turnover, but we don't have a problem stepping in. I mean, all these firms know that we are always in the market doing anywhere from six to eight searches and they don't want to, you know, piss off alpha. And so we'll come in and try to fix things if we can, even after the, the search is completed.
And do the folks you issue the RFP to, I know you say you have some statistics and other things based on the indices you presented. Do they tend to perform well historically?
Yeah, people want to know, because OCIO is going to be more expensive than non-discretionary because, you know, non-discretionary is almost a commodity now, they're just giving you advice. I mean, a lot of them sell that research, that probably what management firms and other things. Is there persistence? Yes, we see some of the OCIOs continue to perform in, in the top half. But, and, and certain ones are typically in the bottom. And, you know, fees and things like that certainly are drivers, how much they do in private equity and alternatives and things that adds in real alpha seem to help. But I think there was it. Anne, what would you say?
Yeah, you know, again, a lot of the total return, right? So whether you earn 5% or 10% in a year is really driven by your asset allocation, which you're going to work with the OCIO on. And so it's a little bit tricky, right? Because, you know, one of the things we talked about on the explore, your OCIO is going to help you guys put together that asset allocation and that's going to go in your investment policy statement. And it's really, you kind of have joint responsibility for the asset allocation. And then the OCIO is going to make decisions about, you know, managers and things like that and implement. So it's still a bit of a shared track record and the differences in absolute asset allocation between clients are going to drive it, you know, to a certain extent. If you're running a similar portfolio to a competitor's as an OCIO, your returns are probably going to be in the same wheelhouse. So I don't think we've seen anybody who's done, you know, an exceptionally terrible job. Certain groups have been able to add, you know, significant amounts over the benchmark. But they all tend to be in the same wheelhouse, I would say, and that's really a result of the asset allocation.
Yeah, and, and to add to that, I think one of our clients' biggest surprises, and, you know, we show you track records, is when you look at seven and 10-year returns, the spread between the, you know, and we worked some of the real good ones, it's only about 1% a year. I mean, obviously that adds up over 10 years, but I think people, clients think there's going to be 5% or 6% spread between the best and the worst, when it's just not there. They're all running broadly diversified portfolio, a lot of them use the same managers. And so, you know, you know, one of the things we do see in the OCIO market, and I, you know, talk about it and write about it, is all the conflicts of interest, it's the most conflicted, way more conflicted than non-discretionary because you've given the OCIO the ability, the ability to hire and fire himself. And I've always liked to say is very hard to fire someone you work down the hall from, you know, someone that's managing the money that also works for your firm. So we do have a preference in the OCIO world to, you know, to work with OCIOs that don't have proprietary products. Not saying we, we haven't had an OCIO, as I said, Goldman's won a search, JP Morgan that has proprietary products. You can tell them, don't use your products. You can say, you use them only in certain asset classes, what do you think they're good at? But, you know, it is a very conflicted model when you give them the keys and say, hey, you can hire and fire yourself.
Have a question, and you may be getting to this, but you said you charge a flat fee. It looks like about a 15-week search process. What is that fee and how do you determine it?
Oh, it's easy. It's $50,000 flat, 8% payable upfront and then 20% when it's completely finished. And the only thing we charge in additional would be airfare last time we drove up to see Anne. So we drive up and then a hotel cost and that would be if we end up staying for the finals. The only time we're really on site would be that, would be for the finals that would, you know, hopefully be in that office right there or that conference room where all the firms go back to back to back, three firms present to you all. So we would be there to orchestrate that. And, you know, clients ask us, you know, how do you pick the firm? Or we don't pick it, we give you so much quantitative and qualitative data, you'll be blue in your face, blue in the face. We give you all the guardrails, people like to say, okay, who would you pick? We really will not answer you, we will continue to hedge that because we're leaving, you're going to live with us hopefully for the next decade. And so Anne hopefully can attest to this, we want you, you guys to make the decision, but we're going to give you all the information. And, and then we do score that A, B, or C were easy graders, she won, your kids go to our school, we're very nice to them. But we will show, we will give Cs and Anna gave an F one time. For fees, the fees were about 4X everybody else. So we will give you some guardrails and give you a little bit of our opinion on different groups.
Kevin, I'd like to just say, what was so interesting to me about going through this process in 2018 was that the two of you just have a lot of institutional knowledge about all of the players. And so it was so fascinating to me. I had on a monthly basis, people coming to see me from Chicago and Boston and all these places wanting to invest our foundation's money. And, and I remember Brad on the phone one day, you and Anna saying, okay, they might be a fit for you, but they're not a fit for you because. And you just had so much knowledge about so many of the firms. Or you would say, that's a wonderful bank, but they're going to want to put your foundation in all their products and we know their products and they're not a fit for your particular situation. And so I thought that was just, there's so much more to this. You almost have to go through it once to even understand how the outcome can be so well thought out for so many different reasons.
Yeah, the RFP processes still kind of shocks me, the question you can ask about turnover, how do you pay for it? How much, who owns the firms? Who's your largest owner? And we get all that detail. We've got, you know, a database that knows a lot about a lot of firms. But the RFP process is the most unique thing I've ever seen, the question you can ask these firms.
Yeah, and Anne, I think you bring up a good point, right? You know, I don't think there is a perfect OCIO out there. And as Brad mentioned, we work with a wide different, a wide variety of clients. And, you know, there are groups that are better suited to certain clients than others. And so that's a lot of the key part of the explore process, right? We need to get to know you so that we can give that insight and say, hey, you know, based on what you told us, we're kind of iffy on this group and here's why. It's really very, very valuable for us to get to know you guys so that we can, you know, better help you kind of figure out. Because they're all going to sound the same, they're all going to sound great and I'm going to tell you how wonderful they are, right? So it's all about kind of matching the strengths and considerations of each firm to what you guys are really looking for, what you need in a partner.
And then that last day is so important. You might really think you know, and then they come in the room and, and something's different. And it's just, it's great to have the RFP consultants in the room that day because you're also observing with the more experienced eye, some of the nuances that happen during the actual interviews where you, one that you were so impressed with, you're really not impressed with their presentation or vice versa.
Yeah, we're not afraid, as you can tell, we're not afraid to call them out on things. We've worked with them, I mean, since we did your search and we've probably done 60-plus searches since then. So we know a lot more of the good, the bad and ugly about these firms, you know, 60 searches later. So, and what they've said, I've seen people blow themselves up in finals, just saying stuff, doing these things. And so, you know, we're there to, to really, you know, have your back and be your partner and this is all we do. And so we know these firms really well.
All right, I got one last question. Do we, I just got to get this right in my mind as far as how you guys are talking about some of this stuff. So you've made a mention a time or two about whether or not we want to give you some names to consider or something like that, to kind of add to your candidate list, it sounds, the way I heard it. We're, I think for the most part, trying to stay out of that, just Just, I think that was sort of our, our directive, this, you know, to, that's why we want you guys available, but, or, or we want to use your services on this. But as far as the, the OCO, is that going to be someone like an advisor, like me, who just happens to do some of this incorporated in their business? Or are these people, this is all they do is they do OCO work for endowments and foundations? And then are they going out, obviously, so if you choose somebody from Goldman Sachs and you're saying, we don't want you to use Goldman Sachs proprietary products, it's still somebody within the Goldman Sachs umbrella who's then going out and maybe buying, you know, whatever, Invesco, like where Brad was, or JP Morgan, or MFS, or Vanguard, or Fidelity, or whatever, you know, whatever indexes they're behind us? Is that the way this thing is laying out? That, that the OCO is, does this, or they're just sort of somebody who does what I do and they're building out a model or using a Raymond James model? What does that look like typically?
So to your first part of your question, you do not have to give us names, you can stay out of it. We, we can handle that. So it's really just, you know, if you want to and some committees want to. So that part's no issue. Brad, do you want to address the second part?
Yeah, you know, we prefer firms that all they do is OCO and typically work with institutions and, and don't do high net worth, because the taxable versus the taxes of client is very different from each other. And especially with their liability strains, spending and things like that. And so, and, you know, have clients that look like you that have perpetual time horizons. I mean, you guys are going to be, hopefully outlive all of us.
Good.
Yeah, so, you know, the retail world's great, but it's just a very different world.
Okay, good. Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to kind of clarify that for my, I, I think that's the right, the right way to be, I just wasn't sure how you guys approached it.
Yeah, and you know, at 40 million, right, at your starting size, there's a fair amount of overlap, but you guys are going to get quite a lot bigger. And once you kind of get above 100 million, I would say there's, we, we just don't see a lot of, of kind of mixing. The groups who work with kind of 100 million dollar plus tend to be very specialized with institutional.
Are the firms you guys are going to be looking for, are they going to be able to see that, you know, tip maybe a firm that normally starts at 100 million? Will they be in play for this, even though they know we're not going to get there for four, five years or whatever?
Yeah, that's a great question. So Access Lux Institute on our list was actually, they used to do law school lending and then Obama came in and took away the ability of private folks to do law school loans. And so their lending portfolio was, you know, coming due and they were getting huge, huge cash infusion. So we kind of helped them. I can't even remember how big they were, maybe like 100 million and they went up to over a billion. So it was quite a significant ramp up. And that's exactly what we did and that's exactly what we do for you all is call the groups who tend to work with 100 million dollar plus and say, look, they've got, you know, cash flow coming in for the next 15 years. They're going to get a lot bigger. You know, we think this is a good opportunity for you, please consider it. And, and I think they will, because like I said, you guys, I mean, to start with cash is, is already great, right? You don't have a bunch of old legacy liquids they got to deal with and, and kind of trying to, you know, undo other people's portfolios. So that's already great. The fact that you're getting in new cash every year for several years is great. And you guys are going to have a, a really, a lot of assets that are going to do a lot of good to your community. And I think groups are going to be very excited about this opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we're usually worried about the opposite. Endowments and foundations are giving away the money as fast as possible.
They're shrinking, yeah.
You know, the fine benefit pension plans are all either being sold or being frozen. And so you have, having guaranteed cash flow every year, you'll be in that, you know, 1% of the clients that know money's coming in every year, regardless of what's going on in the world.
Yep.
It's very unusual.
Well, Anna and Brad, I think we, we've run out of time with you. You know, again, just want to thank you so much for, for joining us. And, and one of our other board members, Mr. Lee Miles here, joined us, just wanted to kind of appreciate him. So I, I suppose with that, we'll let you go. Is it okay if we reach out to you if we have any additional questions?
Please do, and, and thank you so much for considering us. We're very excited about the opportunity. It's been great to, to be able to speak with you all today. So thank you so much for considering Alpha.
Yes, thank you guys, thank you.
Good, thank you.
I see we used. And the next one.
Get your refill or some more red wine on?
Please.
Oh, that, you know, the non-discretionary.
Excellent company too. And they just look like our product.
I think I know what that means. Something, a couple of things that he said. Was he saying that about this or was he saying that about that?
Yeah, it's good. No matter who we choose, they'll go through a training.
Well, we're not qualified to write an investment policy.
And that just comes, that just organically comes up with the firm you choose. Because they have the way they want to do it. We, we could spend a lot of time doing that and it would be a waste of time.
Good afternoon.
Hey Larry.
How are you?
Welcome.
Thank you, Ann. It's good to see you. So when would you, when would you like for us to begin?
We'll begin here shortly. We just have a few board members there.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Stepped out for a moment.
No problem.
Hope y'all are doing well today.
Absolutely. At that time of the year, folks are conducting annual meetings and quarterly meetings with their advisors and their OCOs. And it's just a busy time of the year, so. But it's always, it's always good to be with you, Ann, nonetheless.
We're glad y'all are here.
Absolutely. How's the weather in Nashville today, or in Murfreesboro? I guess you're not in Nashville. How's the weather in Murfreesboro today?
Give it a thumbs up. What are y'all doing? It's beautiful.
69, sunny, not a cloud in the sky. Is that okay?
Well, I'm surprised you're not playing golf this afternoon.
I would be, you're a conflict.
All right, let me get this straight. I, I prohibited you from playing golf and I'm delaying your, your afternoon refreshments. I get that.
Black mark on your scorecard.
That's okay, that's all right. It's not the first time, I promise you, so.
All right. Well, Larry, Libby, Julie, and John, thank you so much for joining us this afternoon and for providing us with this, this good presentation. My name is Kevin Gentry and I figured what we do is just kind of start off by introducing ourselves and then perhaps you can introduce yourselves and then we can go through the presentation. Hopefully that works for you, so.
Let's start over here. I think I'm still off camera, yeah, I'm off camera. I'm Craig Tyndall, I'm the city manager for the city of Murfreesboro.
Richard Stone, I'm, I'm on the board of trustees and I am the market president for CapStar Bank, which is a local bank here in middle Tennessee.
I'm Ann Davis.
Recording in progress.
I'm Ann Davis and I'm the president of a local private health legacy foundation.
I'm Lee Miles, I'm a recently retired bank president and glad to be retired. And you are messing up my golf game.
My name is Kevin Gentry. I work for the state of Tennessee. I work in the investment operations division.
And I'm Rick LaLance, I'm a former city councilman and wealth manager at Raymond James here in town.
Hi, I'm Sean Applegate, chief legal officer with Venture Express, which is a transportation logistics company headquartered here in Murfreesboro.
And I'm Steve Flat, I'm the CEO of National Healthcare Corporation. We're a publicly traded senior care company headquartered here in Murfreesboro.
Thank you, board members. Mr. Coats, I suppose we're turning it over to you. You can.
Very good, thank you. And Kevin, I have to, I, I have to ask, do you work with Carrie Green?
I do. I was actually with Carrie Green right before I came down here.
She's a, she's a very impressive lady. We worked with her on another project that we did in Nashville. Just so very impressive and thoughtful. So I'm, I'm glad to, to meet you and your fellow trustees here in this particular endeavor. But please give, please give Carrie my, my best. So thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Larry Coats. I am the founder and CEO of this organization that we call the Clearview Fiduciary Alliance. And I'll give you some of the background and the history on that as I'm describing the work that we do. But today I have three of our associates who worked with me at Clearview on the call with us today, just to, to keep things moving. I'll probably handle most of the commentary in terms of the presentation, but once we get to the, to the Q and A section, others may jump in as well. With that said, let me begin my, inviting my associates here to introduce themselves. And I'll just, and just because it's in the order, this order on the screen, I'll start with Libby George. So Libby, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Hi, Libby George. I'm recently retired from North Carolina State University where I was the director of investments for over 30 years, where we handled 2.5 billion assets under management from a portfolio risk management, asset allocation perspective. I joined Clearview about 15, 16 months ago. I guess my retirement didn't last very long, so I, I decided that I wanted to keep in touch with the community and really help others in their search for finding good investment advisory services. And Clearview, I'd known Larry for quite some time and was a great choice for me and I've enjoyed every, every minute of it.
Thank you, Libby. And John?
Eat myself there, sorry. I'm, I'm John Rogers. I've been with Clearview for about three years now, a little more. Prior to this, I was in the nonprofit community. I ran a large think tank called the Urban Institute in Washington DC for almost 20 years. And part of my duty there was, was managing our portfolio or at least, you know, interacting with the external managers who managed it. I learned a lot about governance in the process of that and governance is, to a large extent, mostly what I focus on at Clearview. I in fact met Larry about, well, three or four years ago at this point as a, on the other side of the table. I was the finance chair at a university that was struggling some with our portfolio and Larry helped us clean that up and find better external managers and so forth. And I liked the process so much at Clearview that once I retired, I asked Larry to consider taking me on board and he did, and it's been a lot of fun.
Very good, thank you, John. And then last but not least, Julie?
Yes, hello, I'm Julie McLaughlin. It's nice to meet each of you. My finance career began back in 84 where I began in banking and a trust department. And from there, I met Larry at a local Durham Chapel Hill-based investment firm and worked for Larry and with Larry for many years, from 96 through 2012. As the client servicing and client accounting manager, I worked with performance management and working with our external auditors to ensure GIPS compliance. And then Larry sold our firm and we went our separate ways for a couple of years. And I was delighted when Larry started Clearview and gave me the opportunity to work with him again. And at Clearview, I am the administrative person that kind of works behind the scenes and I have the pleasure of working with each of the folks that you see here today.
Thank you, Julie. And our other associate who, who had a conflict this afternoon and could not be here with us is Elizabeth Cabo Jennings. Elizabeth is based in Richmond, Virginia. She has about 30 years, a little over 30 years of experience in the investment industry. She is a CFA, CIMA certified, certified investment alternatives analyst, a lot of, a lot of credentials in addition, those that are shared by the other members of the team here. And importantly, she chairs several investment committees, not the least of which is William and Mary University. She chairs their investment committee as, as well. So with that as the introductions, I will now, if I can make this work, I will share the screen with you this afternoon. And let me begin by saying that I welcome, or we welcome, your, your interaction. So if you have questions, please just interrupt us and we'll be glad to, to answer any questions that you have or address issues as we move along the way. We have scheduled, let me just do a time check, we have, the call was scheduled for an hour. Is that the assumed timeframe? Or should we try to wrap this up earlier? And we'll spend maybe 20 minutes of prepared remarks, but before we do that, I just want to make sure that we're pacing the conversation appropriately. So any guidance, Kevin, or others?
I think an hour is sufficient, Larry. Wrap up right at five.
Absolutely, so thank you. And, and we'll, we'll be sure to, be sure to respect that. So as, as I mentioned earlier, after 20 some years in the investment industry, and Julie alluded to this, I sold, along with some partners, sold an investment firm that we had here in North Carolina and I retired at, at the age of 52, a retirement that didn't last very long and that my, my wife encouraged me to, to do something other than fly fish and play golf and I realized quickly that I missed the stimulation of the, of being associated with the investment industry, one. But also I had, I'd spent about 20 years serving on various boards, had chaired the, chaired the investment committee of several nonprofit organizations, had been the founding board chair of two 501(c) threes that had started here in North Carolina. So I had a lot of interest in the, in the philanthropic side, the nonprofit side. Oh, as a, on a parallel track with my investment career, having been a partner and CEO of an investment firm and then having sold it, been a portfolio manager of a five-star rated mutual fund, so a lot of experience on the investment side, philanthropic interest. And as I, in my early retirement, began to think about whether or not I was going to stay retired, I concluded that I wanted to find a way to, to help organizations, nonprofit organizations, be more effective fiduciaries, to be more effective in living into this responsibility they have for money that frankly is not theirs. They are stewards responsible to either donors or the public good. In this case, for you all, you're ultimately responsible to the, you know, to the population of the, of, of the city of, of Murfreesboro, because that's where this money has come from. And so that's how we made the decision to, to begin to think about starting Clearview. It's interesting to me, as I, as Ann has very kindly shared, a little of the background of the transaction that ultimately creates the community investment trust. And I just want to, want to make a couple of comments about, about that. What a fascinating and, and unique idea to take a, a public service or public asset, if you will, and, and sell it, to monetize it, ultimately to provide more services for, for your population, but then also to turn around and use a portion of those proceeds to further support the organization, to the population. And it's a, it's a really unique transaction. We've been involved with a lot of organizations that, as Ann's foundation has, have, have come about as a result of the sale of a hospital, for example. That's probably the most common example of the sale of a, of a public entity, if you will. But this is the first situation that we have the opportunity to engage in a conversation with. That involves a, a utility, essentially an electric utility, which is what you all were running for the city. And so it, it is a, a great and unique opportunity. I think it demonstrates some pretty interesting standards in terms of stewardship and fiduciary oversight. And so I just want you to know that we appreciate the, you know, the thoughtfulness that has gone into, into making this decision and ultimately the transaction and the resultant creation of, of this particular, this particular foundation. With that said, so you all are focused on doing something, continuing to do something good for your local population. In many ways, that's a, that's a similar way that I thought about my post-retirement engagement, was that I wanted to find a way... was that I wanted to find a way to do good for and to help nonprofit organizations, the population of nonprofit organizations more broadly. I wanted to be able to help them by using the resources that I had, which in this case were primarily the investment experience and the nonprofit experience. And so we created in 2014, this organization that we now call the ClearView Fiduciary Alliance. The ClearView Fiduciary Alliance, we describe as a membership-based, research-focused, learning and teaching organization, whose purpose is to help foundation-endowing and not-for-profit boards make more informed decisions. Our belief is that if you're more informed, that you will ultimately make better decisions. So that, that was our original mission and where we started. In terms of what we do, our original work was really around data aggregation and analysis as we collect data each quarter from the OCIOs and the advisors of our member organizations, now over 80 organizations spread out over 16 states. We collect data from those organizations, portfolio, performance, asset allocation, asset class returns, and create a quarterly peer analysis that allows us to help the committees and boards that we work with benchmark their portfolios. And that's the, that's how we started ClearView originally, as that data aggregation and analysis function, if you will. Not long after we started ClearView and began doing that work, we went out and found a third-party dataset, the Investment Metrics Database of Foundations and Endowments, created a system that gave us the ability to run all of this in a, in a password-protected portal, imported the extra data from Investment Metrics, that gives us the ability to now each quarter have over 1,100 portfolios, foundation, endowment, and not-for-profit portfolios that we can monitor. Gives us a very unique view into what is taking place in this particular segment of the investment world, where the investment world and the nonprofit world intersect, if you will. As we developed that system in 2016, began to add members to our organization and we, when we, when I use the term members, these are nonprofit entities that have agreed to be a part of the alliance, meaning that their advisors, they have instructed their advisors to share their data. And then we use that data to focus on helping them understand not only how the portfolios have returned a certain way, but why? Is it because of asset allocation or investment selection? As we began to, to live into the power of that system, our committees and boards came to us and said, well, this is all nice, this is a lot of analysis, would you, plus, help us use that data to look for best practices and then help us live into the utilization of those best practices? And that began, that's when we began to, to focus on the board and committee education piece, really began to focus on investment policy and a lot of other factors that folks were really interested in. And then in 2017, recognizing that one of the benefits of this quarterly peer analysis that we are involved with is that we know who the advisors and the OCIOs are, though we don't disclose which OCIO's returns are related to that OCIO, but recognizing that we have access to that data, one of our committee members or a couple of our committee members of member organizations came to us in 2017 and said, would you help us do an RFP? Initially, we declined because it's a lot of work, but ultimately agreed in the summer of 17 to help one organization with an RFP, immediately began to build systems, to build process, to build the infrastructure. Six weeks later, we got another phone call and today we have recently started, I think, our 40, I'm sorry, our 51st or 52nd RFP in about six years' time. So the work that began really focused just on data evolved into a partnership with our members around education and that partnership has evolved into an additional service, very important service, of helping them with RFPs and other research and consulting work that we do as well. It's important to understand that the membership piece, which gives us access to all of this data and the RFP component of our work go hand in hand. They add value to each other. The RFP work as a result of having received over 500 proposals over the last six years or so, gives us a much deeper view of market intelligence. Similarly, the investment peer analysis, the membership piece also allows us to interact with the boards and committees. For example, today, I've participated in four committee meetings as they were meeting with their OCIO or their investment advisor for an annual or quarterly update, which gives us the ability to know real time what's actually taking place in these OCIO's portfolios, not just the response that they provide in the RFP. So the work actually fits hand in hand to add value, we believe, to all of our members in the organizations that we, that we serve. On page three here, just some data that I would share with you in terms of our credentials and the work that we've done. I'm not going to go through all of this, but I did point out, for example, over 150 firms have responded to the RFPs that we've done. A very deliberate focus, I do want to point this out, but I think it's critical, a very deliberate focus several years ago, in partnership with our, our members as we were conducting RFPs, to begin to live into what it means to consider diversity, equity, and inclusion in an RFP process for an OCIO or a registered investment advisor, depending on the size of the organization. And I think the last 36 or 37 RFPs that we have done have actually included DEI components increasingly over time, but they've included DEI components in the RFP work that, that we have done. The, the list of our member organization is here on page four. I'm not going to walk through all of those specifically. In terms of names that you would, Tennessee names that you would recognize, you would see Montgomery Bell Academy here, Harpeth Hall, the Maddox Fund in Nashville, as well as the Webb School in Knoxville would be the organizations that we have worked with and or continue to work with in, in Tennessee. In terms of the specific work, and forgive me for advancing that more, in a somewhat spastic manner there, I'm not exact, exactly sure why I did that, but nonetheless, I want to get to, just summarize for you, the advantages, we believe, of, of the work that we do, particularly in helping organizations search for an OCIO. And I've laid those out here, they're very straightforward, but let me just highlight a few things. First, we only work with foundations, endowments, and not-for-profit organizations. So we don't do searches for pension funds or family offices unless they have an affiliated foundation. We are uniquely focused just on working with foundations, endowments for not, and not-for-profits. We have a pretty experienced team. Most of the organizations that do this work will have a couple, one or two folks. We have an experienced team that brings a combination of nonprofit experience, leadership, as well as investment experience, credentials. We have, we've made a deliberate effort to build a team that is just more than one or two of us. You're a, in the early stages of creating this foundation, we believe the investment policy statement is foundational. One of the things that we, we really engage with early on with the organizations that we conduct RFPs for is to make sure that we have a good handle of what their investment policy should look like. Now, that is not to say that it requires that you have a final investment policy statement before you issue a, an RFP. What it is to say, though, is that it is important that we identify some of the key issues, the critical issues, in terms of how much discretion you're, you would like for someone else to have, what general types of risk are you willing to accept? All of you will have certain biases or preferences and we want to spend time getting to know and understand what those preferences are early on, because ultimately they will become a component of your relationship with your OCIO, as well as they will influence the investment policy that you ultimately adopt. So to that end, one of the things that I think makes us certainly different and gives us an advantage is that we spend some time upfront, at least drafting an outline of what an investment policy for your organization might look like, so that when we send out the RFP to the candidates, you're able to, or we are able to communicate to them with you at least a general understanding of what it is that you would like to accomplish. We believe the process, we believe the process matters. You all are qualified to make the right decision for this new foundation. The challenge is whether we can or someone else can come alongside you and guide you through a process that puts you in a position to make the best decision for the organization. We spend a lot of time focusing on tools and process to help make that happen. I talked earlier about the level of data that we have and the information that we have at our fingertips, not only around potential candidates, but the nonprofit investment space overall. We believe that is, is as deep and as wide as anyone else that does this work. We understand the challenges of group decision-making and we've spent a significant amount of time focusing on tools that will help you all make decisions together in a respectful, in a considerate way, while at the same time encouraging you each to bring the best of whatever you have to the equation. We use technology, we, the RFP, if we're selected, will be issued through an online RFP system that gives us the ability to monitor and track the activity of the candidates as they are preparing for and responding to the RFP. It gives them the ability to submit questions and then we respond to all of their questions through that portal, so that everyone has the exact same information, allowing them to respond fully informed about the requirements and to the extent that there are, there's a need for clarifying questions, we have the ability to provide those as well. One of the other great things about using technology is if any of you have been through an RFP process before, you will remember the, the old days when, when we conducted an RFP, we got binders back about this thick and we lined them all down the, the middle of the conference room table and we said, okay, what are we going to do now? Those days, at least in terms of the RFPs that we conduct, those days are gone. The N-Hub RFP system gives us the ability to issue the RFP, receive the responses back, and then gives you the ability to review those proposals online. Question 1.3, all of the responses, one after the other, encouraging what we believe to be a more focused and more efficient review of the proposals and ultimately scoring and then final selection. And then the last but not least is that membership. I used the term membership several times. We are here for you as an ongoing partner. Through the organizations that engage us to assist with an RFP, most often will continue to be members after they have become, after they've engaged us to assist them with an RFP. We include in our RFP process, the first year of membership. Most of the organizations continue that membership after that first year as they have become accustomed to receiving the data and the information that we, that we share with them on a regular basis. The process, and this is going to look similar, I'm guessing, to most organizations that you will speak with, several things I want to point out here. And that is first, your, and I alluded to this earlier, your priorities and preferences, we really want to understand your views. You all have very specific experiences. We want to understand those views and the implications for the design of the investment program for this foundation, then ultimately for the trust, and then ultimately for the selection of the OCIO. We want to spend some time understanding the important investment policy factors. We want to spend a little time with you, making sure that we are all on the same, you're all of the same mind in terms of the amount of discretion that you're actually going to grant to the OCIO, and there's a page I'll get to in just a minute. Coming out of the city, it's a, it's, it's, this is an interesting scenario in that, to the extent that there are certain procurement requirements in terms of process, we want to understand those and be sensitive to those. And then similarly, there may be certain diversity, equity, and inclusion considerations that you would, you would want to make sure that are addressed in the, in the RFP process. And then finally, we want to make sure that we understand how much you would like to be engaged in the review and the scoring of the proposals. Ultimately, we're going to want you to review in detail a handful of the proposals, but the question is whether or not you would want to review and score all of them. Some of you may choose to, or may say that you'd really like to do it, others may say absolutely not, but we will work with you to try to come to some consensus and then our process will allow us to help you do an initial screen and then focus on just a few, if that is, if that is your desire. Okay? In terms of, I alluded to the governance model, one of the things that, you know, we'll come back to this more if we are engaged by your group, but one of the things that we, we try to really focus on in the investment policy is a clear understanding and communication of responsibility, authority, and accountability. We believe those are central to a good and effective investment policy statement. And so we'll come back to this, I'm sure, again, as we, as we continue our conversation with you, if that is the case. The last thing I'll share with you is that as we begin to think about the candidate pool, you know, from our standpoint, ClearView does not have a quote recommended or approved list of OCIO providers. As I indicated, we've had over 150 firms that have responded to the RFPs that we have conducted. A significant amount of research has gone into creating what we view as generally a taxonomy of the providers, the OCIO or discretionary providers within the industry, the investment industry overall. Those categories or types of firms are listed here. The industry has evolved significantly. You will most certainly not include firms from all of these types or structures in your RFP. But on the other hand, it would probably be advisable that you not restrict yourself to just one segment of the potential provider universe. And so we typically would suggest that you consider a cross-section of these, typically two or three of the categories, depending on what we learn from you in the early days around your priorities and preferences, that initial work around understanding a skeletal outline of an investment policy statement and so forth. And with that, I've given you the, the bios from our firm and I used about, about 25 minutes there. Let me stop and answer, let us answer any question that you have.
Mr. Coats, we certainly thank you for that presentation and all the detail that you provided and the insight, structure of your firm and your research and, and... you provided, and the insight, the structure of your firm, and your research, and et cetera. It was very enlightening. Just wanted to reach out and see if the board members had any specific questions for you.
I've got a question. Larry, the RFP process, what does that timeline look like, as far as, let's just call it a conservative timeline from start to finish? What do you guys propose to give room to get that done?
So, thank you for the question. The typical response to that question is four to six months, okay? Now, there are some caveats in there. What we typically find is that the six-month version of that involves an organization that has, frankly, a lot of work to do cleaning up an existing investment policy statement. It's actually easier to work with a committee to essentially start from scratch and provide an outline of an investment policy statement, deal with a handful of issues, and then use that to launch an RFP than it is to try to clean up an investment policy statement that may be, maybe, may have a certain amount of ownership bias from some of the committee members. And so, four to six months is a good timeframe to think about.
All right. Thank you for that. The other question I have is on the fees, and you've outlined it here, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but on the asset range, I think we're in the vicinity of like $40 million to start. If we decide to engage your firm to handle this, would we be at that consulting fee amount of $30,000, and then a continuing membership fee based on whatever the asset range is in that year that we renew our membership? Is that the way that that's handled?
Yes, that's the way it would work, is we would include your membership, the membership is included in the $30,000 for the first year, and then continuation is based on the assets at the anniversary of the membership.
Thank you.
Larry, I've got a question. This is Lee Malsman. Having been on a number of committees where you're trying to select someone to do whatever outsourced work, the great challenge is, how do we differentiate you from other extremely well-qualified entities? So what's your elevator pitch of why you versus the others in your universe?
Thank you. It's a great question. I think I hit, for all intent and purposes, I hit those in the highlight points of the advantages. The team, more experience, both on the investment side and on the nonprofit side, than I believe anyone else that does this work. Deeper market intelligence, because of that membership piece, we actually see the returns and the portfolios of organizations each quarter, and I think that gives us truly an advantage. So you've got the team, you've got the focus on, just on foundations, endowments, and not-for-profits, that is truly unique. No one else has that specific focus, if you will. And then it's the use of technology and the breadth of the work that we do. Is that helpful, John? And Libby, would you have anything that you'd want to add to that? John, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm on a different laptop. Anyway, one thing I would add, Larry, having run a number of these competitions myself, back when I was at Urban, and having worked for some other firms, and then having, you know, sat on the finance committee when we did this at the university that I mentioned a few moments ago, I feel, and, you know, one could say this is not a non-prejudice statement, since I now work with ClearView, but based on that prior experience, I do think that, as a value proposition, ClearView offers more. We certainly don't charge more than anybody else. Perhaps we might charge a dollar or two less, but I think we deliver more.
I've got a question on the membership. So if I'm understanding this right, this membership fee would give us, I mean, the biggest thing is this RFP, picking the investment advisor, et cetera, but once, let's say we go out two years, three years, we're paying an annual fee, and what we're getting for that is visibility into a portal? How does that help us as a committee? Like, what are, because we don't have a ton of time to just dive into data, and if we do, it's probably not going to make a ton of sense overall. So is this something, like, if we get into it and we don't want the membership, is it just a year-by-year, and we just give notice?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's absolutely, it's absolutely a year-by-year renewal, one. Two, I'll give you an interesting case in point in terms of the value of the membership that some organizations see, not all, but some organizations see. So today, as I indicated, I've been on three or four, I think it's four, other committee calls today, and those committee calls, they had investment meetings with their OCIOs, but this is the time of year where we come in and actually share with them the research that we've done. We continue to track fees and monitor fees in the industry. We benchmark, give them their peer analysis to help them understand how their portfolio is performing, whether that is because of the way it is positioned in terms of its asset allocation, or the investment selection, or is it both? And what are the implications? So ultimately, the benefit of membership is to help you identify the questions to ask your advisor or your OCIO, and engage with them in a more informed way, and to put that into context and perspective. With that said, some organizations may not choose, I mean, you saw the fee, which is the full membership, other organizations will choose to just have their data submitted to us, and them access it once a year, and we're able to, we're able to charge a slightly lower fee for that. So if there's, our goal is to have the membership structured so that it meets your needs, if there is some need for incremental data, but it doesn't necessarily have to be that fee that was on the prior page. There are actually three levels of fees that would step down at each size category. Does that help?
Anything I would mention, just to put another two cents in there, is, you know, there is skepticism sometimes about the value of the membership fee, and that certainly was true at the university that I was associated with, but over time, that university has retained the membership, and I think it's worth mentioning that ClearView as a whole has a retention rate among our members of, what is it? It's north of 90%, if I'm not mistaken. So it's, it turns out to be a pretty significant value add for most of our members.
Larry, do you have members who, for whom you have not done an RFP? Are there those that just join as a member of ClearView?
So, we've done 50-some RFPs at this point, not all of them completed. I think 47 or 48 are now completed with 80-some members. We obviously have organizations that we have not conducted RFPs for, and as John indicated, we have a handful of organizations that joined when they asked us to do an RFP. They continued a year or two after, and then they didn't continue their membership any longer, and that's perfectly fine. The simple math would suggest to you that most of them have stayed around. The other thing that has happened is, many times we'll have organizations that would join ClearView, and then a couple of years into their relationship with ClearView, they ask us to assist them with an RFP as well. So, the two are not necessarily tied hand in hand, other than, we include your membership, your first-year membership, when we, for example, when you join now, we would include a first-year membership for you, because we have to have that membership in place in order for us to share the data that we have from our other members. We have a commitment that we will not share the data that we receive from the research around our members with anyone other than other member organizations. So that gives us that window to be able to do, and that's why we include it in the RFP consulting fee for the first year.
We share that data anonymously, of course.
Oh, yes.
Got a question.
Absolutely.
I've got a quick, so just to, I want to clarify a couple things, kind of big picture, and then specifically on this, and you may have just touched on it a little bit, as kind of how this was swimming through my mind, was, so if, let's say we go through the RFP process with you guys, we continue the membership, and three years later, I guess this begs, it's a separate question, which is, I mean, maybe how much turnover do you see with organizations like ours, who we say, well, look, this just isn't working? I mean, I'm guessing the whole idea of this membership is, so, it sounds like what this is about, or a big part of it is, you said, being able to ask the right questions, but being able to write, ask the right questions has to do with, is our advisor really giving us the best advice from an investment perspective, right? So if that is not working out, three years from now, and like I say, you may have just answered this, people buy memberships, and then they end up going through the RFP process, that's because they figured out it wasn't working out. Is it any, is there any difference? Is this membership fee tied to that? I mean, what likelihood is there that we're going to be right back in the RFP process three years from now? I guess is what I'm asking, based on, we've got all this great data coming in, and we're seeing all the questions we should be asking, and how bad, how poorly our advisor is doing, perhaps, right?
That's an excellent question. So we've been doing, we've been conducting RFPs now, July, the first week of July will be six years, and we are about to conduct the only repeat RFP from that universe. So we started six years ago in the summer of '17. We have one organization that is, no, one of the early organizations that we did actually is conducting another RFP. And interestingly enough, the reason they're conducting the RFP is not that they made a poor decision, their financial situation has changed, they have significantly more money than they had previously, their board has turned over, and their related liabilities or their grant-making structure has changed as well, and so they need a different type of advisor. That's the only case we've seen where organizations have come back and said, we did an RFP and it didn't, you know, and we've got to do another one. Over time, I'm sure, we will see some of those, but for the most part, we have, we have not had that, well, not for the most part, we haven't had that experience yet until this one that we are now can get ready to start. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, can I give you a little layup, a softball here, I hope, at least, is that, I mean, is the, the idea behind the membership, then, as far as how it might benefit us, is that if we're asking the right questions, then hopefully, we're able, the advisor will then be able to make changes, do things differently, whatever that is, meaning, we don't have to change the advisor necessarily, and go back through the RFP process. Is that how that works? I mean, is that correct or no?
So, I'd say probably 25% of the folks, and this is a rough number, but 25% of the organizations that come to us that think they need to do an RFP, if we can convince them to actually let us collect their data and have them become a member, they make the decision, many of them make the decision to not conduct the RFP, because of our ability to look at their portfolio, their performance independently and objectively. Let me be clear, we don't necessarily want to be in the business of generating a lot of RFP work. Our goal is to help you have a better relationship with an OCIO that you can extend for a longer period of time. I mean, one of the fundamental challenges, you take these pools of perpetual capital, and then we oversee them with a revolving door of decision-makers. I mean, I don't know whether your trustees are going to have term limits or whatever, have it senior bylaws, but that's one of the interesting questions. But if you take a pool of capital that you want to be around for 100 years, and you have a revolving door of decision-makers at the board level, and then we introduce as well, this requirement that, or this expectation that you're going to do an RFP every five years or seven years for an investment advisor, what are the odds that that equation is actually going to work out productively? Is the question that I would ask for you. And so how do we keep, how do we structure an investment program for your benefit in working with you and an OCIO? How do we structure a program that increases the odds of being able to keep the same folks making decisions, assuming they're making good decisions, for a very, very long period of time? That's in policy, that's in process around the selection of the advisor or the OCIO, and that is in creating a feedback loop that gives you and your successors as trustees the ability to always understand the path that got us here, why we are here, and the context in which where we are today is appropriate for tomorrow and next year, and five years, and maybe 10 years from now. Does that answer your question?
For sure. Thank you so much.
What else can we tell you all?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
John, I'm so intrigued with your addition to the team, and you said you specialize in governance, and that is so needed, like, the city's a public entity, so they have a city attorney and their own team of attorneys, but for all of your 80 clients and people like my foundation, the dues, the ClearView dues, would be like three phone calls to our foundation attorney, and just to be able to get that type of support, I think that sounds like a tremendous benefit of membership.
I think so, too. Just recently, Larry and I gave an overview of sort of what it means to be a fiduciary and what good governance really means, and it was to a group of, you know, pretty sophisticated people who were trustees for a community foundation. But I think, based on the feedback that we got, it was of enormous value to them, and it is the kind of thing that we do on a recurring basis as part of the membership. So, yeah, I think it's a high-value proposition, and I hope we get to work with you guys.
I'll ask one more quick question. I'm sorry, but it's a quickie. Just to make sure that on this, on the fees, you guys know how our inflows are going to work, where we're going to start with a lump sum, and then we're going to add to that? I mean, I just want to make sure you guys are square on that, that we're not, that we're not in this one category for a year, and that's what we're going to base our fees on, and then the next year, we're going to be into the next category, because we are. So I just want to make sure you guys are okay. I, you know, I just don't want it to be a surprise to you guys. Do you realize we'll be in the $50 million category after a year or two, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. And, you know, I mean, there's nothing magical about this. I mean, what we're attempting to do is help organizations recover our costs, and make, you know, make a little for the, make a little bit of money for the effort, but all of us have had other careers, and so, you know, it's not like we're, it's not like I'm in a situation where I'm trying to send my kids to college by charging you an extra $5,000 or $10,000 on your relationship. We try to price our services, as John indicated, so that it's a good value proposition for you, and it allows us to provide the quality that we want to be able to provide for you. So yes, we understand that we're pricing an RFP at $40 million, and a year from now, you're going to be a number higher than whatever the next category is, and in theory, if we could put you all for a year, then we would charge you $10,000 more to do the RFP. Yes, we get that, and we're perfectly fine with engaging with you at the rate that is your current assets, because that's what we do with everyone, so I wouldn't do it any differently with you.
Very good. I just didn't, I just wanted to make sure we were kind of being stand-up on our end, that it wasn't something that just you guys didn't know about.
Yeah, and I will say to you, Ann was very direct with us on that, and very transparent, and so I thank you, Ann, for that, but also for the follow-up question today.
Okay.
Larry, I've got, this is Richard, I've got a quick one for you. I heard you speak to this implicitly earlier, and just want to clarify, when we go through the RFP process, and we narrow down kind of who we think the best matches would be, how involved, if at all, do you guys get in helping us kind of negotiate that next-level fee with that investment advisor and that structure there?
So, Richard, thank you for the question. John and Libby are smiling, because, and that's, we don't view this as a project that we're trying to hurry up and get done so we can move on to the next project. We're going to assume that we're building a relationship with you all, and that relationship begins with this project, in your case, but it lays the foundation for the opportunity for us to continue to be a partner with you for a very, very long time. One of the benefits of all the work that we've done is we, in One of the benefits of all the work that we've done is we, and we, we have access to a lot of data and we collect that data. So we know what fees should be at different asset sizes. You have a unique situation in that your assets are going to grow, so we need to think about what that fee structure is going to look like in three years and five years as you're, as you're negotiating the contract with whomever you select as your OCIO. We're there. We will be involved in each of those processes. We often, we're not attorneys, just to be clear, we're not attorneys, but we've seen hundreds of investment advisory or OCIO contractual agreements and we go through those, we identify items for the committee or the board to go back to their OCIO on. And we typically know where organizations are going to give and where they're not going to give in terms of fees or other contractual, contractual arrangements. So we will, we will be there as a partner in that process as well. Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The other, the other thing I, I want to say, and that, that creates a point of transition as well for you, and I should insert here, and I just realized, we've got three minutes left. But the point of, the point of transition that I want to make is, you know, through this process, we'll do some skeletal work on an investment policy statement, we'll issue an RFP and ask for feedback from all of the candidates on that skeletal investment policy statement. And then from there, we will work with you and your OCIO to take the feedback, combined with that skeletal RFP, uh, investment policy we put together, we'll work with you all to then help finalize that investment policy statement. So the learning that we have upfront, focusing on your priorities and preferences, we're going to share all of that with your OCIO and help them understand what we learned early in the process as you move toward finalizing. We have two minutes left. I'm looking at the clock, I want to be respectful of your time. Obviously, we're glad to stay here longer. If you all have questions, let me just ask, are there additional questions before I thank you for your time this afternoon?
Mr. Flat, you have any questions?
Yep.
All right. Well, I think you all answered most of my questions. Any other board member have any questions? Okay. Well, Mr. Coats, Libby, Julia and John, thank you so much for your time this afternoon. Highly appreciate the, the presentation. It was very informative.
We appreciate the opportunity to be with you and wish you luck. Have a great deal of respect for this, uh, this opportunity you have before you. And it, it looks like it's likely to be a lot of fun. It may not feel that way as you're about to embark on an RFP, but having this organization in your community, I mean, what, what a, what a powerful idea. So kudos to you and, and, and your leadership there and we hope we have the opportunity to be partners with you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Suppose we continue to move forward with business or do we need to take a five minute break or anything? Five minute break for everybody? All right, we'll resume at five oh five.
The second group kind of started slow, finished strong.
The second group got better when we asked questions and they actually dove into stuff that they didn't cover.
I was so do, I was like, and then all of a sudden, I'm like, how about a minute? That sounds all right.
Yeah, it's, it seems like it's highly customized, which I like. And I kind of like the idea of, I really like the idea of having a resource that we can benchmark up against every year or whoever takes our place to kind of, and see where we originated, have all that data visibility. To me, that's better than paying almost double and having somebody come in and get us through a process and then we're on our own.
Well, yeah, I wonder if that's that index, you know, alpha, whatever index that they did, I wonder if that's their answer. Because that's what sounded like the same thing, was you're able to see how they're doing against the index of your peers.
But is that only for when we, when we RFP and then we're done? Is it just like, hey, we're going to be with you and then our goal is to set you free and fly?
Well, because he said it's a, it's on the website. You go to the website on that, that particular website and you can see forever.
Yeah.
It sounded like, now, we don't get any guidance on it, you know, that's just us pulling it up against the index. I mean, you know, there's, we can talk about this here in a minute, in a minute, but.
The other piece is we can get, I mean, we can get like five years of a membership and a RFP for the price of the RFP. And we can do the membership for a couple of years if there's no value to it, we just cut it off.
I like the idea.
I feel like, I feel like that's what we need.
For a minute there, I was thinking, and I'm not, I was thinking, well, you know, we could do is use the first part of the RFP.
And do a membership.
And just do the membership. And have both of them, you know, have both of them involved. I mean, I'm not for just spending extra money necessarily, but you know, if there's, like I said, we talked about it here in a minute, but that's a.
I'm going, Jennifer.
My brain was bouncing back and forth a little bit on the two options.
Lee, how are you, sir?
It's actually better for anybody, isn't it? As far as your, uh.
Spending the evening, sharing the night.
Calendar, crazy.
Calendar stays crazy.
Yeah, because.
Everything's done and closed by August thirty-one.
You have yourself a fall vacation. I just, I just, I wouldn't play enough patsy quick.
I took it out there.
Yeah.
She's doing October, that whole five days of April.
Before she goes out on a visit.
You have to take five days in my office.
All the money people. It's a way to catch all the sticky fingers.
Who me, I have nothing to do with that.
Like, I don't even, I don't even have any.
If you touch money in England, you're going to take five days away.
Monica doesn't even give me the code, the code for the sale. I don't even know what it is.
But not taking five days off is never a problem.
It is, I have a good time with it.
I'm really good at that.
I'm really good, I'm really good at one and two days off.
Yeah.
All weekend, I cut out Thursday at lunch.
I do like the structure.
Now with the, having the council meetings and these meetings, the community contribution meetings and all of that happening now, it's the.
So now it's going to be a joy, new people on the backyard.
I'm actually going on a big one.
I went to Hawaii.
I went to supermodel one day, I was at a college.
Conversation.
I never did anything for also regular high school.
With the family, they, they're going around, they're doing.
I'll give mine five days.
Oh, you need some lip balms and maybe spirit drugs, you're going to get a hand, maybe a hat.
My wife, we said, that's not enough. We got still playing, I was like.
She thought you were good for the fancy luau.
Actually, I, I kind of, I was like.
You should not do this.
Not doing it.
No, you just have to embrace it. Like, our party, it's cool.
I'm embracing a lot.
That was the only thing I put my foot in.
So, so you know, you know, you're sure.
I'm, I'm, I'm mentally.
Yeah.
For, not, not, yeah, I was working a lot. And so we did like these family camps, we kept, mostly, you know, like, our thing's good, L D L. We were the that, like, we got all the local kids in for three days straight. There's also these like family camps and national camps, you know, like, like up, up the dollars, right? Well, we bought them, we cheated for riches for those hands. And it was, after the party is over and the guests are like, how to have fun.
Really?
You know, like, oh, Samoan, Samoan guys with their parties.
But just hang back.
But I'm going to pick his name, I'm going to see him.
Earl Harbor, this fall camp.
We didn't, we didn't know what they were, if it wakes up now.
To get them out of my snorkeling practice.
Five years.
Break with light a little bit last year.
Yeah.
Three days in honeymoon, you know, and I stayed up late a couple nights probably or whatever and I take off, I wouldn't feel my best.
Every time I sit in the water.
And it, it takes a little while to get used to the snorkeling.
Good to see you.
I suck some water in, it's out in front of me. I sit there, I'm kind of treading water for a minute.
I'm like, what's going on?
I mean, just supposed to be getting back to my present.
I started to take.
I apologize for being vocal.
Our whole school, this thing, I hope you know where this is.
They are hitting you.
They're waist carrying.
Only, I'm talking about that our pack.
I'm like freaking out.
They had to help with the ducks.
I'm like, what is going on? I'm freaking out, already messed up in my breathing. I'm back to the shore. I'm like.
And ditched your new wife, just let her run.
You know, I, I get on shore, I'm still shook up and I look out there, somebody.
I'm back, I'm back at the, they invited me.
I don't want this evening. I'm like, what's wrong with you, man? I'm like, this bitch just attacked me. She's like, oh, like all in this area? I'm like, yeah! How'd you know? It's like, look right there. There's a little fish food pellet thing.
Looking for the pellets.
I was like, oh, thank God. There was some, there was no fish, we're seeing this. There was no revenge on Rick, you know, I'm like, oh, God. I just turned right back out, you know, I was like, thank God, it was beautiful. The good time I was prepared for, you know, I just let it pass for a second.
Take your pockets, pull them out.
But it was really, really sucks.
I was moving, I don't know.
Probably.
How would I know? It was a little spooky for the time out.
I'm, I'm.
Well, we did a little one.
Still want to be like, you know, just kind of naturally.
Has foundation on their business.
Yeah, I'm excited about it.
Most all of it.
Get started.
I want to get that.
It was big.
I could, I know.
Someone worked with Lee.
Kevin, you need a hammer.
About it, but.
So, uh, Rick is getting some food, so.
Yeah.
It's blowing in like the breeze.
Yeah.
Get the gab.
I don't want to.
You think they're going to come over here?
They're going to come over here and snap on me if I hit that thing.
Yeah, we, we do have it. Number one on the agenda cleared. We just have eight more to do. It's turned into dinner.
Well, the later it goes, the faster the items will be.
Mr. Flat, a moment.
I'm going to get, you get started.
No, so this gentleman, I don't know what Jeff's having for supper.
So is your supper?
No, it's not, it'll, we'll come up with something.
All right, all right, board members, about eleven after five, I suppose we can continue moving forward with the agenda and get things started back up. In light of the presentations that we've just had, I think they gave us a lot of good information about the services they provide as well as the pricing fees and, and things like that. So if no one has any objection, no worries, I just wanted to see if folks had any additional thoughts that they wanted to share with the group and if we ultimately wanted to take a vote on who we would like to select to perform these services for. So just open it up for anything that anyone would like to share.
I brought my list, Kevin, of the firms that do this and so it's a page long, so we can interview as many as y'all want to. I will say, we did, Craig and I talked quite at length with another company called Kidderbrook and they declined to participate because of the city being public. And so I don't know how many of those would have similar feelings, but these two have both been vetted that they would indeed work with us. But if the board would like to meet with others, we can certainly schedule additional interviews. We thought two hours was about all the group could probably take at one city.
I think based on both, each, each of these companies, their resumes are exhausting. I mean, they're both qualified to do what we want them to do. I think it's, you know, who do we feel more comfortable with? And I would lean on your experience because I know you've done business with one and you have more, probably more experience in this definitely than I do, but most of us in here, you know, what are we missing? What, what's good? What are we missing? Those things, I would lean on your experience for that.
I think they're both excellent. They're different. You can see Brad and Anna are younger, they're really into the, uh, the alpha NASDAQ indices that Brad invented with NASDAQ. They, um, they want to come in and help us get this done and then they move out. Larry, uh, that we interviewed seven years ago also, no, excuse me, two thousand eighteen, so six years ago. He was really much more into the membership aspect of his firm then than the RFP. They had not done many RFPs. And the whole RFP for OCIO is a rather new, you can hear them both saying six years, right? It seems to be a niche that several of these companies have embarked upon about the same time. And Larry was all about the membership. And so I think just where we were at the time, we had learned the best practice was the. And so, I think just where we were at the time, we had learned the best practice was that you do an RFP every seven to ten years, and we were feeling like we had not done that, and we wanted to. That was our singular focus. Brad and Anna are so enjoyable, like, our board, every time they sit there, just so enjoyable to work with. But I think Larry's team would be too. Larry is going to hang in there with us longer if we decide to go with them, and is what they offer in terms of their membership, benefits of their membership, is that something the trust is interested in? Is it something that we find would be helpful? Thought the governance piece would be very helpful. Larry was talking about at the very end, how they will sit in meetings with us in our OCIO. And so I was trying to wrestle, you know, would I want that? But it might be really pretty interesting to have someone sit with you. The city has so many attorneys and so much to offer, perhaps the trust would not need that. But I thought it was very interesting that they would be like your team player. I know the Maddox Foundation in Nashville went with Larry, and I'd shared several of these company names with Kaki, and she said, we love being part of this membership. Should have a big shout out to that. So, you could see that Brad and Anna just do nonprofit and for-profit. I appreciated that they had done an RFP for Charlottesville, Virginia. When you look at ClearView's list, I don't see any cities, we see some schools, but we are a municipality, and does that give us all a little, you know, relief to know that they've already embarked on a municipal RFP and come through alive without offending anyone?
Tell us, so, you know, in one hand, Brad and Anna kinda tell us, well, they're kinda take care of it and then they're out, right? Or then they don't have the membership thing.
There's a phone call away though. I speak to them regularly.
It sounds like you're still engaged with them, though, and that they stay engaged over time and somehow. Are we, I guess I'll kinda go on the, are we missing something question there? Is, I mean, if we're not necessarily gonna use a whole lot of that $6,000 worth of membership fee in terms of really getting a lot of use out of that that we not, that Brad and Anna aren't willing to do anyway for us, I mean, they may not come sit in our meetings. Is that really the only difference that we're getting?
But you heard, but Rick, you heard, you heard he said, Brad and Anna are all about the RFPs, and you heard Larry say, we're not trying to overwhelm ourselves with RFPs. So that's sort of a difference of philosophy, right? Excuse me for interrupting you, but.
No, that's okay, 'cause I was kinda going two parts this. Is the, do you see, did I hear it right, that that Alpha indices, that Alpha whatever index, is that kind of the comparison to what they're saying? You know, 'cause I think what Coach Larry was saying was, hey, we're gonna make sure that you're staying up to speed, you've got this comparison to how others are doing in the membership group. I think that Brad was saying that's kind of what this index is doing for you also, except we just go access it via the internet, is that kinda right?
Well, he's partnered with NASDAQ, so I think he's just on a different level. But then, the way it was proposed to us is that if we wanted to get that information from the Alpha NASDAQ, that we would pay a subscription. And so we were able to get it through our OCIO. They are the subscriber. They tell us every month where we are. So, as Craig and I were talking about during the break, the data informs the decisions. The data is so important. So Larry's data, the attorneys in the room, did it not sound like it was a mixture of his clients and his, he's really based in North Carolina, perhaps more of a localized database?
You know, it's all good points. I mean, kinda what I, in general, just when I think about data, to the point you just made, I think, you know, do we really know what's in there? You know what I mean? We think it's valuable, we hope it's valuable, but is it all kind of, is it broad enough to really help us out, so to speak? And perhaps it is. It's just one of the things we don't, we don't necessarily know because we hadn't looked into its database, so hopefully it is, but.
But maybe Larry's data is more pertinent to us in the southeast than the nationwide, you know?
'Cause he has sixteen states, Larry's was, so it's a pretty broad six states. And I didn't hear the first half of them. I apologize, I had a funeral. But the relationship aspect, just listening to both of them, had a great appeal to me long run. Because boards are going to have normal turnover, and that continuity could be helpful. And it may be that Brad's group does it, and they just aren't charging a fee for it. Because if I understood, we'd pay a $30,000 fee for the second group, 50 for the first one. So there's a difference there, and so if I'm gonna pay, you know, 50% more, I just wanna make sure I'm getting that much more value.
You're really only getting it for six months, because your RFP process is taking from four to six months.
So, you know, I'd wanna, those who heard, and you know the first group well, so I'd wanna know, what is there enough information from the first group that would make me wanna spend more for kind of a transaction versus paying less for relationship? You can flip a coin, either one of these groups, and I think we'd be fine, so it's not like I have a strong feeling.
And you could, you could hire one for the RFP and join the other as a member.
No. I should've asked this question, but on page three on the ClearView presentation, they've got these eighty-plus members in sixteen state alliance members. But then they talk about 2,200-plus annual peer review portfolios. How does that connect with the eighty members, and where are they getting the 2,200? I mean, how broad is that data set? I really didn't get a clear picture of that, probably should've dug deeper in the question.
I'd be glad to follow up with them and get the answer for you.
Well, to your point that you've already, already made, Ann, if you get the good OCIO, I mean, they, they really ought to be able to bring you benchmark material that is valid and reliable and substantiated and, you know, I don't, I don't know. I did kinda wonder, why do we need that ongoing if we hire the right, or really anybody, the reputable OCIO?
True, and that's kinda what I envisioned, that's why I was asking the consultant question at the beginning.
Right, right.
Because if these folks come to board meetings and whatnot, and they talk to us about performance, we're gonna wanna know about attribution. We're gonna know why things perform a certain way, what adjustments we should make, benchmarks, et cetera. And I would think a prudent OCIO would have access to all that information anyway.
It sounds like yours did as well.
Mr. Flight, my observation would be, you know, once we go through the search process and hire an OCIO, how do we know if they're performing well? Right? I mean, we get, in my experience, investment advisors, don't take this the wrong way, Mr. Lelance, do a good job of showing you their performance against the indices they choose to show it against.
I hear that too.
So, I think to Larry's position.
You can call a different guy, sounds like me.
I don't know.
Be careful now.
Different management companies. I think, you know, Mr. Gentry could attest to that as well, but I think Larry's position is, he has no skin on the investment side of the game, so he's gonna benchmark what your OCIO is doing versus his peer groups that he has collected data on. So, I think that is part of that membership portfolio and management perspective of what he does. That's, that's the way I read that.
I think the true value lies in the fact of this is a $50,000 versus a 30, because we get a free membership for the first year with the 30, and if we don't like it, we don't have to renew it, so that's part of it. So it's really a 20, I don't know, 24, 25,000 versus a $50,000 for an RFP, and it seems like their processes and their timelines are the same. So I guess my question would be, is there, is there so much value in what the first group could do that's worth paying the extra $25,000? I think that's really the big question. And your relationship with them is helpful, because you've been through this, and you know how it works with picking an OCIO, and I've never heard of that term until we started this process, right? So, there's value to that, but like, as stewards of the city's money, and as a trust, I mean, that's, we really need to be able to identify why we would pay double for essentially the same proposal.
Did they, did they answer the question, did the second group answer the question about kinda going to back for us on fees? They kinda laughed, two or three of their faces kinda.
Richard asked.
Yeah, I know, you asked, and they kinda, you know, they kinda giggled a little bit, three of them kinda smiled about it, but I don't know that I remember them saying, you know, 'cause Brad and them were like, you know, one of our big value, you know, what we're gonna bring value is, we're going to war with them over these fees, you know, we're gonna cut, get them there, we're on your side. I don't think I heard the same. I was just getting ready to do a little bit of math, but did they?
What, I'll tell you, what I heard, when they were giggling, was what, I think what they heard my question was, are you gonna help us negotiate the fee to the transaction?
Yeah.
And then we're done. And I think what they responded is, yeah, we know what you should be paying. We're not just gonna negotiate the fee, we're gonna be there with you through the entire process and then beyond.
Yeah, and his answer was, we're not attorneys, but we read hundreds of contractual requirements, and we know what to look for.
He explicitly said, yes, we'll negotiate the fee, but what, I think, and the question he heard from me was, are you gonna be there up to the transaction with us? And he spoke to, I will be there up to that negotiation of fee and beyond throughout the entire process. I think my question was explicit about the fee, his response, and the way I think he heard it was, will you be there to the transaction? And his response was, I'll be there to the transaction and then some. So we'll help negotiate the fee, the contracts, the agreements, all of those things.
Well, $20,000 out of 40 million is half a basis point. So, you know, on one hand, paying somebody 50,000 versus 30,000, or getting the $36,000 value for 30 versus 50 is certainly, is certainly valid, but it's not gonna take much, and that's kinda the reason I knew it wouldn't be, you're not gonna take much in terms of saving a little bit on fees on the end result at the, at the investment manager end, or just that much more performance for one year, much less a 10-year deal? So, I mean, it, the, in the bigger scheme, the $20,000 could be made up really easily. I'm not sure I can label why, other than it could be made up pretty easily. That was why I was kinda asking the question about the fees, I mean, you know, a basis point or two difference.
My broader concern, whichever one we use, I think they both do a fine job, is seeing through the transaction, I shouldn't say transaction, seeing through the RFP process into the selection of the investment advisor OCIO, how do we know which one of these is gonna bring us the best options? That's really what we're trying to get to, right? We're trying to get them to consult and advise us through a matchmaking process to get us a good OCIO, and how do we know, you know, in their experience, we may end up at the same top three out of all of it. That would be ideal, and if that were the case, we would take the cheaper of the two. How do we deduce from the information that they provided and the presentations that they gave us, which one's gonna bring us the most talented OCIOs for what we're trying to accomplish? And the, a couple of things that stand out, but as Ms. Davis said earlier, the biggest one that kinda resonates in the back of my mind is, Alpha does have experience with the municipality, and it's the only one on both of their pages, city of Charlottesville. Yeah, Charlottesville. That's the one that resonates in the back of my mind, it's a public entity, they've had experience with it, and that, you know, is that worth $20,000? I would suspect, at the end of the day, we're gonna end up with a lot of, potentially a lot of the same names for OCIOs.
I had, there was one thing that I read, and I don't remember where I read it, it's in here or in one of the attachments that they emailed to us from ClearView, but there was some discussion, I guess it's on the email, there was some discussion in their paperwork that was about how they're really kinda geared towards smaller, making sure that smaller organizations. Did you guys see that attachment? I think it was in the email where they had about, there was one big attachment from, from Alpha, and maybe three different or two different attachments from, that was from today, right? There's three attachments, about how they.
Well, I deduced that when you look at, when you look at Alpha's client list, and you look at the 15 billion, the 18 billion, I mean, those are, those are big relationships. And then, when you, when you look at, yeah, I'm sorry, but when you look at their, Larry's list, actually his pricing model, is a zero to five million investable assets. I mean, that's clearly.
And also on page, um, let's see what page this is, on Alpha, I didn't hear Larry discuss the One Fund OCIO model, and I thought, well, Brad was there in Atlanta, he worked at the Duke Endowment. So he has a lot of relationships in North Carolina where two of those four One Fund OCIOs that he mentioned are in North Carolina. He came out of the Duke Endowment in his previous life, and then the folks who started Global Endowment Management in Charlotte are out of Duke, it was a split off of the Duke Endowment. So, the reason that that model was attached into our group is because they had a pooled fund where private equity was already part of it. Our previous OCIO in Charlottesville, Virginia, actually, had the hardest time getting into private equity. They were just beating their heads against the wall. Every time, you know, we got a call once every 18 months, we've got private equity, and it was like a big deal that they were able to get into that. So, when you buy into a pooled asset like that, you, you're already at your 8% or whatever your investment policy, you know, dictates for your private equity and hedge funds and the things that people are less familiar with.
I was gonna ask that, you know, to Larry, because I asked Brad about the private equity side.
It doesn't mean that we couldn't have gone with another, we had three other firms that were not that. And at the end of the day, consensus was, these are the smartest people in the room, and we're gonna go with the smartest people in the room, and that's what it was.
Isn't that, it's on that first attachment on the email, I'm picturing, you know, kinda, this is from ClearView, it says, smaller organizations often lack such resources, the resources were board and committee members who bring relevant experience. Small organizations often lack such resources, though they have same responsibilities and duties, our goal is to provide these smaller organizations with data, research, education, blah, blah, blah. That's how they say they help. And so, I, you know, I think I went into it a little bit biased from, from that, just because of the way I read that beforehand, I was a little bit biased, and honestly, I thought that, that the coach group started off pretty slow, as far as why I would have any reason to do it, and that I would've felt like there's probably a reason they're gonna charge 40% less. I can see that reason, but I think they finished strong for me, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused on what the right answer is here, but perhaps, you know, I don't, I don't remember the exact timeline of this, but I know in a group setting, this is difficult and all that kinda stuff, but if there was a way we could just, I mean, I'd like to just be able to ask Brad if I, I didn't know to ask, I didn't know the other guy was gonna be 30 necessarily, or the other group, you know, for, 'cause I didn't exactly know how they all combined, but, or compared, but, you know, I wonder if we could just, if we had a couple of questions we'd like to ask as follow-up, if we could present that via an email, get some answers back, and then, and then make a decision on it.
Yeah, one of the things too, like, I do like the fact that the first group has dealt with a city before. I like the fact that they deal with big asset pools, which eventually we're gonna have, and we could always go with them and then join this membership if we want the visibility and just do the, do that, and then we, and then we're getting the visibility. What I do like about the first group more than the second, they got really granular on their four to six-month process. They got down into, we're gonna send out a hundred questions, this is what we're gonna come back with, this is what we're gonna do in weeks three and four and five, and I think for our group, when we only meet a certain amount of time, their intentionality and their specificity on the plan is super helpful, and I think that is where probably the value is, because. the value is, because if we pick the right OCIO, that's where the value's going to be, and it seems like they have a roadmap to get us there, and you've been down that road, so you can attest to as as they laid it out here to us today, is that how it flowed for you guys?
Oh, to the to the deck. Because you see, they're on their end, Brad told me this week, they're doing eight right now, so that timeline's very important for them, because they have to time that one month break when people are responding to the RFP. They're, they've moved on to another stage with another customer, right? So, everything, it's almost like a process calendar, it has to be.
You know, I was a bit ambivalent when we came back from break, but after just hearing everybody discuss it, I I think Alpha personally would be the better fit. They focus on RFPs, you know, it was an afterthought for ClearView. I mean, you know, they were doing the member thing, they've done over 80 compared to 52. They've got a municipality, they've got 100 billion, and I don't know what the total is for ClearView, but it's not nearly that much, because they do focus on the smaller client. So, I'm leaning back that way. Now, to your point, Rick, about is there, if we do a follow-up question, one good question, because we said, we're doing this to select an OCIO, that's what we want, to get the best doggone, and we don't really want to do that every three or four years.
It's offensive.
Not if we've got a lot of confidence in them. So, the question was, to ClearView, how many of your 52 have put it out for bid and they've only had one? Now, granted, there's some smaller clients, but there's some pretty good names on that list of 52, and that one, he had a pretty good, I wish we'd asked Brad, how many of your 80-plus have rebid the OCIO?
I think he said none.
One.
I didn't, I didn't hear it, I didn't hear that question answered.
He said they didn't rebid the OCIO, they went in, helped them with that OCIO firm find a different contact.
Yeah.
See, you do it every seven to 10 years, so that's, if they've done it for six years, in two years, they're going to be real busy again, right? They just haven't had, the cycle hasn't, excuse me, I don't, I didn't write.
Well, if that question, and I just missed that, if that question was answered by Brad and it's, you know, on par with the answer we have from ClearView, personally, I would prefer the Alpha.
I mean, the level of diligence is what's important here, it's the point you made, we're just talking, we're, the key thing is RFP, make sure we make the right selection.
Yep.
And even when ClearView was talking about, they make certain selections, that really grabbed my attention, because, you know, even if they made certain selections and screened folks out based on their recommendations, I would at least want them to present the scoring and justify why they choose the top three to five or whatever it is, based on certain qualitative factors they consider important for us to make the decision off. So, I think that would also probably, now, that's after the fact, but it also answered a lot of our questions.
Well, we have time, if everyone wants to email Kevin or Craig with their questions, we can definitely.
I'll back off that a little bit, just just kind of tell you all, I I was sort of leaning on towards Alpha, and I wanted to give them a chance to rebut it. If we were going to say, hey, look, we're just going to, if we're, you know, my point was kind of, if we're just going to make the decision based on 30,000 versus 50,000, I would have wanted to give them a chance to say, hey, look, we're about to make this decision based on 30,000 versus 50,000, can you tell me why? That was kind of my point, but if we're leaning towards Alpha, I'm pretty comfortable with it, I mean, just, I I'll say that, I mean, I I don't need the extra time necessarily, I don't want to be the starter of that delay, because really, all I was going for is giving them a chance to to try to justify. I didn't, and I was also trying not to be too presumptive on what I was saying, who I was for, too early, but I I'd be comfortable with Alpha and moving along with that personally.
I think also with the with the Alpha proof statement, they had, they've got 31 firms have won their their search process, and the most that any firm has is four. So, that that's a very diverse group of OCIOs that are serving a very diverse group of entities, and I think we'll have no problem falling in that process and finding out somebody. I feel like they would be super objective and very well-qualified.
And so, as our corpus grows, think of it this way, they explained to us years, five years ago, I don't know what it would be today, but, you know, zero to 50 million, there are people that specialize in that, 50 to 100, then 100 to 250, then 500, and then a billion and over. And when I called, because I spent quite a bit of time calling references for each of the firms, we interviewed six five years ago, and I could hardly get off the phone with Rip at UT, who had done two RFPs with Brad and Anna, $1 billion corpus, and they were just raving. I really think in the end, that's probably the phone call that, when I told my board that he was so enthusiastic about them, but if ClearView is specializing in, I won't call them small, there's some very significant foundations on that list, okay? Well, we're about to, we're about to go on a trajectory where we're going to be in, hopefully, two or three categories in a short amount of time, and I think Brad and Anna have relationships, obviously, if you look at Kroger and some of the ones on there, they have the relationships and have the information on those OCIO candidates, which maybe ClearView has that also, but you have to know Brad and Anna have it, right? Because of their client list.
So, the private equity thing too is very, is important for me, I mean, I, just depending on how much of that we can go into and our and our, with what our investment policy ends up being and how how close we have to stay under the investor rules and the state of Tennessee and all that kind of stuff. My my personal experience with with talking with the comptroller back, you know, a year or two ago, was that, you know, he he was pretty open about saying, you know, you don't need to feel like you have a lot of limitations on how you guys should be able to invest that money. I mean, he flat out said it in a, you know, a group meeting there to me, so I feel like that should be okay, and I I feel like that's going to be an important component of it. I'm sorry I didn't ask quite, you know, just directly on the ClearView side, but knowing that we'll be at, that we'll have access to that and have access to a good, a good, you know, Brad answered that question for me really, really well, I mean, I I know the firms he's talking about, you know, we don't want, sorry, I shouldn't say it that way, my opinion on it is that we definitely don't want to end up with an OCIO that's struggling to get PE in private equity every 18 months or something like that, I mean, you know, that's not the way it should be, I mean, I.
But changes the outcome of your profit.
Yeah, we we need, I think we would want to be able to to access the, you know, alternatives easily and with somebody who's who's involved in it. Now, I did hear that one of those people in ClearView was some kind of, they had some sort of background in alternatives, but I didn't, they didn't really explain that, so I don't, did anybody else hear that? I thought I heard the one, maybe the lady in.
Right, she was at North Carolina State.
Right, maybe. Anyway, to me, that's a really important one, and it sounds like we know for sure we're able to get that through through Alpha.
Yeah, I mean, private equity credit's tight right now, so I think, you know, some companies are struggling getting it anyway, so as far as the investment policy goes, I don't know if we have the allocations built in there, but the policy does allow for alternatives, including private equity, strategic lending, and real estate. So, you know, it all depends on, like you said, what the allocations are going to be, and that's part of the job of the OCIO, I think, to kind of tell us what they recommend.
Well, and one of, you know, one of the questions that I'll have, and I don't, during the during the the next phase of this, if we if we move on with Alpha or however this works out, and, you know, one of the things, when we work out this investment policy statement, you know, I I certainly, they're going to want to make this very benchmarky, you know, and you can tell from really both of their answers, both of them had not, you know, kind of language that they talked about, like, well, you know, it all really boils down on what the allocation is, not necessarily the investment manager of that allocation, and and essentially what they mean by that is, you know, look, if you choose 3% large-cap growth, and large-cap growth is the best, the best performer for the year, but you only got 3% of your assets there, it doesn't matter if you have the best or worst large-cap growth manager, you're not going to perform very well. And 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 so, you know, I I though do want to dive a little bit deeper on that asset allocation, they were, ClearView gave me a little bit more of an indication that, you know, he kind of made a comment that, basically, they're all going to be about the same, and and that hurts me a little bit to hear that we're going to pay somebody, that we're going to end up, you know, we're going to pay somebody to end up with OCIOs that are all going to be basically the same performance, given the same investment policy, right? And and, you know, this last couple of years has been a a pretty big, pretty big eye-opener from the standpoint of saying, all right, well, look, you can say, if we just use the old, all right, 65% stocks and 35% bonds, well, if you had short-term bonds, it was a real big difference versus if you were loading up on intermediate long-term bonds, right? I mean, so are we going to get an OCIO that's just going to put us in just purely benchmarky stuff, and it's going to all be benchmarked? Because that's just kind of easy. I hope that we're able to, when we dig in with them, to tell them, we don't want you to have full discretion necessarily, but we're we're looking for something where there's some, you know, where we're looking for some guidance on these things, not just so you can say, look, we matched up right alongside the benchmark, because we can match up right alongside the benchmark without any paying anybody anything, you know what I mean? We can go to Vanguard and do that ourselves, probably, and it just be.
That's why I think the time that we spend in this RFP is where we need to spend our time, we need to be.
Talking about it.
And and that's four to six months, so I don't, I don't think we should drag our feet on who we pick, we need to spend our time getting through the process of figuring out who that spokesman for us is going to be, in my opinion, because we're still, we're talking about, you know, November, December, getting this wrapped up, so.
I'm ready, if y'all are, I don't want to speed.
Chairman, having listened to the dialogue, I think there's a likely consensus on the leaning to one, and we could obviously ask a lot of questions, so absent any strong feedback, I move that we engage Alpha.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. I guess we need a voice vote on this?
No, we see further discussion.
Any different discussion, any more discussion on the matter?
Anybody else?
Okay. All who approve, may you confirm your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who oppose? Okay, it's been proper, uh, properly approved, I suppose we'll move forward Alpha as our consultant, our OCIO search. Thank you, Mr. Moss.
So, what we'll do next is we'll talk to Alpha and get from them the documents they require, and we'll bring it back to the board as quickly as they can get it to us and we can get it through the legal process, so that it can get approved and move forward. So, in the next meeting, we'll we'll get their, I I assume they have agreements for retaining them and paying them, usually people like those, so we'll get all of those and make those available as soon as we get them and and get it vetted through the legal process.
Sounds good. Okay. Our next order of business here is approval of minutes, I think everybody has a copy of the meeting minutes and likely has had a chance to review them. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Go move.
Second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All who approve, may you confirm your approval by stating aye?
Aye.
The only, the only change in the permanent record, just, and it won't change the vote, is that we did reflect Kristi Houston's name correctly in the official minutes that we'll.
Thank you.
That we'll record, so they weren't in the drafts that went out to you.
Thank you, Craig.
All right. Our next order of business is an update on our insurance coverage, is Mr. Tindall?
Yeah, we are now, well, we're bound, I think we've paid for the insurance policy, so we do, we have insurance for the board, directors and officers' insurance for the board, and we have general liability. The other thing we did is is we met a couple of different times, I've talked with the broker, I've communicated with Ken, who came and presented about cyber insurance and criminal insurance, and where we're at in talking with our our legal team is because all the financial transactions are really residing on the city's computers and their systems and are being handled through city employees that our coverage, as it exists now, would would extend to the to the trust, and so we essentially have cyber insurance in place as it is. We'll we'll talk with additional to see if we need to get an endorsement, or if we're just recognized as a component unit, we don't need to have an endorsement, we'll we'll take that additional step to make sure that we're we're all set on that.
Okay, thank you for that update, Mr. Tindall, anybody have any questions for Mr. Tindall regarding insurance? Okay, moving on.
Jennifer was involved, anything, I didn't know if you had anything to add, I didn't want to cut cut that off.
The invoices, we've received them, but we've not paid them, because we just received the checks today on that bank account.
Okay, but we are bound.
We're bound, we just haven't paid the invoices yet.
Coverage is in place, we just have to pay pay the bills.
Sounds good. I'll try to talk to you about that, once it's over. Nothing big, simple question. Next order of business is establishment of investment bank accounts, Mr. Tindall?
Jennifer touched on it, she can keep going.
So, the Raymond James account has been established, and I believe Craig has in your binders a sheet that has the Raymond James investment summaries, and then there's a summary of the cash balance that's remaining and the three treasury bills. So, we put in short-term maturities based on the RFP process that the board is going through. Initially, we said June, July, and August, now, based on the six-month timeline, when that one matures in June, we'll go ahead and put it in another, we'll just reinvest it in another maturity, same thing with the July and August, just to help get more interest and a little bit more earnings on those balances. The cash balance, at the last meeting, the board had voted to put $100,000 in cash based on the expenses and on the FY '24 tentative budget, and the initial startup and not knowing when those expenses would come in, I asked Raymond James to keep 200,000 in cash, and I was going to bring it back to the board to recommend approving that 200,000 to go ahead and go into the bank account at Truist. The bank account is now set up and ready to receive the funds. If the board approves it and is okay with me transferring that 200,000, I will make that transfer tomorrow morning. So, I guess, if the board's okay with it, I I'll make that transfer in the morning, and as I said earlier, that I I received the checks earlier today.
And that 200,000, so like you said, I believe, to cover administrative expenses and other other things?
It will be there to cover administrative costs. The next item on the agenda, I believe, was to go over financial reports, so it's expenditures that we've had to date, the city's already paid for some advertising costs for the meetings of both the board and committee on contributions, we've had the attorney's fees, to get the account set up, we had to pay for checks and some signature stamp for those checks, so that we can actually write them and issue them out. So, we've had some costs that we've incurred already, so the the bank account is to hold the 200,000 and to pay those operating expenses as those costs come through, and to make sure we don't have to short-sell any investments.
But we'll have $50,000, 80% upfront, I think, is what they said, to kick off this RFP, so if we go with 100, that cuts, that's easier just to set up.
Very quickly makes that 100,000 disappear.
Well, is it sufficient?
Do we vote?
Well, what I mean is, is the 200,000 sufficient, you think, or do we, do we, do we need more allocated there?
We don't, we don't have access tomorrow right now, it's in treasury, but it'll be, it'll be back in June, I think the 200 gets us to June, though.
The 200 should get you to June, and then we can reevaluate in June based on where expenses are and what our, what your budget looks like at that time. I plan to update the financials each month, and we do actually have the funds set up now in our. now in our financial system. My assistant director actually assisted me with that this week, so you guys are officially in our system now.
I just didn't know if we wanted to set a specific amount aside, that way you wouldn't have to keep coming back, but if we wanted to just evaluate it every month at the board meeting, that's fine.
I, I think it would be better to evaluate as we go. I, I don't think it's necessary to set a specific every month, because it's not necessarily going to be a set amount each month.
Sounds good.
Yeah, if it gets close, I mean, the city can carry until we get down to, so we, we'll be fine, I think, with, with that amount. And that's, the next agenda item actually says financial report, but we've kind of done it, I put it on there because we wanna do that every month, to come back and tell you where we're at, and what we spend it, so it's really a placeholder in there, more or less.
It looks like we've covered agenda item number five, financial report. We can move forward with update on committee of contributions, Mr. Tindall?
The committee on contributions met a couple of weeks ago now, and we presented to them the city's strategic partnerships that we've had for some time, so they got a, a outline of, of who we've supported for, for a while. We talked about timelines on, on the committee, when they would be funding it, but more importantly, when they would go through their process to be able to come back to the board with their recommendations for future funding. So the process now is we'll meet, coming up pretty quickly, to, to look at a couple of systems for grant-making, and have the board decide on one of those. So one of the expenses that will come back to the board is software for their grant-making process, and then open up grants, I think the, the timeline is to have, maybe the grants opened up late summer, early fall, and accept applications, then have them reviewed over the next couple of months, and then January is a target, somewhere in January is a target for the board to come out with recommendations to meet the deadline on, back to the board. And after the board gets the recommendations and accepts those, or changes, they can do whatever, do whatever you feel is necessary, then that will go to council with a veto power, and come back to the board, and then we'll start the funding process, which may, may extend over several months before, you know, funds actually go out the door, depending on what the request is.
Thank you for that overview, Mr. Tindall. Anybody have any questions about committee on contributions? Okay, and now, we'll move on to other business. Is there any other business we need to cover today, or any other topics anybody wants to bring up? Okay, hearing none, I suppose we need to set a date for our future meeting. We'd probably still good to meet once a month for the next few months, so is there a particular? I know in June, I will be in Oregon, I think the third week in June. But other than that, I should probably be available.
Look at that, what's the first full week in June starts on the 5th, and I think we were looking at Tuesdays or Wednesdays, so it'd be the 6th or the 7th. 13 and 14, 14 would be a workshop here, but will be done by the time the committee would come together. And we could look at, we started a little early today at 3 o'clock, we could kinda go back to the 4 o'clock if we wanted to, since we probably won't have two hours of interviews.
Now, I apologize, Mr. Tindall, I said the third week, but, yeah, I mean, I guess it is, but the 12th or 15th.
Oh, the 12th you're gonna be on, okay, all right.
I'm available on the 6th or 7th.
So we've been planning for that meeting to contain the first step with Alpha? Is that the purpose, in addition to the regular business?
I think.
Or is that another meeting?
Well, if we, if, and we could, we could talk with Alpha what they think, but to get their contracts and everything in place, and then maybe do some preliminary work at that meeting with them, cuz I think they, they probably will have a discussion on more deep, on the timeline that they wanna take, and the questions they wanna have us answer, and things like that. Might be a good time to do it at that meeting, if they're available, obviously they, we'll check their calendars, but, yeah, and then we'll do a financial report and.
When we get that tentative agreement contract, can we share that with everyone, so we can at least read through it, and then we?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get it out before the meeting, so everybody can see. We'll, we'll vet it through the legal, make sure that it's in good shape, so you're not reading something that we're gonna change anyway, but after that, we'll get it out to the board before the meeting.
I don't want him to be offended, where is our legal counsel?
I, I don't know, he had a, well, he had a doctor appointment today, maybe he got tied up.
Let him know he was missed.
He was missed, okay, all right.
We need to go to Oregon.
It was noted you were absent.
Yes.
It's well through the 6th.
I think I can do the 31st or the 7th.
I can do the 7th, I can't do the 6th.
I'll go for the 7th, all right.
What time would we do the 7th?
4:00.
4:00.
I'll be flying back in, but I, I should be able to make that.
Okay.
I don't have that flight schedule.
You can land right out here.
I'm on my jet, just, right? No, I'm not, I'm not gonna be flying anymore.
I've done that.
7th, yeah?
7th at 4, I think we can, I can make.
7th at 4. 7th at 4.
Okay. Okay, so we have a placeholder for our meeting on June 7th at 4:00 PM, same location.
I should've asked Chad, is that, is that good? Okay, all right. Ask Brenda or somebody to email that, do us just as a follow-up. Yep. We'll get calendar invites out, okay.
Before we adjourn, just wanted to, trying to be mindful of everybody's time, not rush the meeting, but just before we adjourn, does anybody have any additional questions or thoughts? All right, well.
Just one, I'm so appreciative of all the work Andy did to get us this point, because we could've, I, I hate to think the time we could've spent, just trying to narrow it down.
That's true, nice, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Definitely valuable.
Pretty much to do.
Being said, this is 6:03, and we can consider this meeting adjourned.